...to the September 16th Board of Selectmen meeting here at the Herman Room. We're not going to have a flag here in this room, but welcome to everyone here. We're going to start off tonight by hearing a very important presentation that has been long in the works for the Water Quality Management Committee. They're going to present a fairly full bit of information and then we'll have some conversation after that. Obviously, if people have some really burning questions in the moment, you think you're going to lose, you can raise your hand, but I think probably it's best for us to get through the entire presentation and then we can kind of get into a substantive discussion. So, welcome. I think Mr. Turkington is going to do the presentation on behalf of the committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Before I get into it, I'd like to introduce the committee. We've had a number of people who've been working on this for a long time. We talk about five years, but it's really been more like 10 that the town has been addressing this issue in a serious manner. The Water Quality Committee's been around since 2011. Steve Leighton, who was one of our original members, Virginia Valiela, who is one of the original members, John Waterbury, who's one of the original members, Tom Duncan, who's one of the new folks, and Ron Zweig, who was almost an original member, he came on in 2012, and Matt Schere, who's not here yet, but probably will be. It's quite a group because most of them, except Virginia and I, have extreme expertise in these areas that we're about to talk about tonight. I'm not sure what Virginia and I bring to it, except old age, but here we are.
A few other, I think a few other things.
Anyway, we're also joined tonight by Ray Jack and Amy Lowell, who we've been working with for years, hand in hand, to try to put this package together, and Jeff Gregg from GHD, who has been a consultant to the town for about as long as the town has had a consultant on this subject. His colleague Anna Stajter-Rudenko is not here, and another one who's not here who did a lot of work on this is Sia Karples, who I think you all know and remember. Her work is in here, and we're very appreciative of everything she did for the town. We also seem to have a quorum, perhaps, of the planning board, which we're very happy to see. The Conservation Commission is represented, the Board of Health. So, we have, the biggest brains in town are all gathered in this room tonight, and we hope that something good can come out of it. What this is, it's a long name here, but it's the Draft Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan for Little Pond, Great Pond, Boons Pond, Eel River, Walk White Bay, West Falmouth Harbor, and Oyster Pond Watersheds. The special question some people may ask is why is the town doing a comprehensive wastewater management plan? Well, the long answer is Falmouth has more coastal estuaries than any other town in Massachusetts. They were looked at by the UMass Dartmouth School of Marine Science and Technology, funded by the state and by the town to really look in depth at each one of these estuaries. And the answer, in each single case out of all 15, is that they are impaired. Impaired has a scientific meaning, it also has a real, realistic, real-life meaning. It means the water is cloudy, it means that the eelgrass is disappearing, it means that all the species that we like, the shellfish, the finfish, they're all disappearing, and we're left with water bodies that aren't productive and aren't good for anybody. And the state and the federal government have both said, you've got to do something about that. And so, what this plan is, is Falmouth's way of addressing what we can do about that. Why are we doing just these half a dozen estuaries right now? First reason is, back in the 1990s, the Board of Selectmen looked at all the estuaries and said, boy, these are the ones that are most impacted, they're the worst off. So, Little Pond, Boons Pond, Great Pond, Green Pond, Walk White Bay, and Eel River were selected to be what we were going to look at first. In 2011, when the town meeting took this on and appropriated money for this project, Oyster Pond was added to the list, and when we did the first CWP five years ago, West Falmouth Harbor was added to the list by the DEP, because they wanted that to be included. So, the story begins with a $600 million bill. Our consultants at the time looked at our situation and said, well, here's what you can do. You can sewer Little Pond, Great Pond, Green Pond, Boons Pond, you can sewer all these estuaries on the South Coast, and then you can go sewer some more north of Route 28. It'll cost you $600 million. And everybody looked at that and said, whoop, Falmouth is not doing that. Falmouth is not going to spend $600 million on searing 8,000 homes and six estuaries. It was just not a practical thing. So, town meeting created the Water Quality Committee in 2011 with the mandate to study and demonstrate alternatives to searing. Any kind of alternative that would be reasonably practical and reasonably cost-effective. They told this committee, you look at it, you try it out. We weren't just going to do paper studies, we were going to do in-the-ground, in-the-water demonstration projects to see what works, what doesn't work, what it costs, what's practical. So, why are we updating it now? The basic reason is, the last one we put in place was in 2014, and we were obliged to update it within the next five years. So, by the end of this year, the update will have to be submitted to DEP. It's being presented to you now as a draft. You and the whole community will have plenty of time for comment and for additions or corrections. It will work with the different agencies, and in the end, it will end up at the state level at the end of this year, and that will be the plan for the next five years going forward. So, we're looking at this in two ways. We're looking at the progress that has occurred in the last five years in the town of Falmouth, and the goals that we collectively have projected for the next five years and beyond. So, in the past five years, we started out, as many of you remember, there was a lot of enthusiasm for eco-toilets. But we spent a lot of time and money on eco-toilets. Selectman Brown was there, and those that we're talking about. We did a mailing to every house in town, offering a $5,000 incentive grant for anybody who would install an eco-toilet. 170 people responded, we went up to 50 of their homes. Evaluated the homes, talked about how much it would cost, put them in touch with people who installed these things. At the end of the day, nine people actually installed them, and two subsequently replaced The other incentives that we put forward, we took a special act of the legislature to determine how this one happened, is that everybody in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area was offered the option. If you put in an eco-toilet, you won't be charged a betterment. Well, 1,350 people were offered that option, and nobody took it. So, I think by the end of this process, and this took several years, by the end of this process, it was pretty clear to us and everybody else that while there may be advantages to this kind of technology in terms of nitrogen removal and such, it was not ready for widespread application in the town of Falmouth, because the consumers weren't buying it. All right. Another initiative that we took, and Falmouth took the lead on this one on Cape Cod and in Massachusetts, was fertilizer control. Everybody knows fertilizer is largely nitrogen, and an awful lot of it was going straight into the estuaries. So, we passed in Falmouth the toughest fertilizer control bylaw in Massachusetts, banning fertilizer application within 100-foot estuary, as well as limiting the dates that you could apply it and the kind you could apply. But the 100-foot ban was a key element. The 100-foot ban got a lot of attention from the fertilizer lobby. When it showed up in Boston, they persuaded the Attorney General, who reviews all the bylaws, to say that it wasn't, that we couldn't do it, because it should have been the Department of Agriculture or somebody who should be in charge of this. Fortunately, we had a great legislative delegation, including the Senate President, and the next year's budget included a special line saying that Falmouth could do it. So, Falmouth has done it. Every year, we send a letter to everybody who owns property within 100-foot estuaries saying, there's a bylaw that says you can't fertilize, there are penalties, don't fertilize. It's also posted at Doug Jones's suggestion in the stores in town where they sell these things, fertilizer. And the Conservation Commission, to our great appreciation, includes it as a standard part of their order of conditions. They have jurisdiction within that 100-foot zone, and everybody who gets an order of conditions from them, it's written right into their order of conditions, you can't fertilize. So, I think that's a real success story for this town. Shellfish, as you recall, is also another huge step that the town took to see if you could grow them in quantity, and to see how much nitrogen they actually would take out when you grew them in quantity. So, we grew them in Little Pond, over 3 million oysters have gone from seed in Little Pond and been transferred, moved over, whatever the word is, to West Falmouth and to other water bodies, where they are harvested by any number of eager Falmouth residents and commercial guys. We've done demonstration projects. Ron's been the leader on this one in Boons Pond and Walk White Bay, to see how much nitrogen comes out, how fast it can take to grow them, everything you want to know about nitrogen removal using shellfish. We put an oyster reef in West Falmouth Harbor, and we have moved on to, from the experimental stage into the implementation stage, as you all well know, because you just did this last week. The Shellfish Advisory Committee recommended, and you approved last week, contracts for private aquaculture developers on three half-acre sites in the Eel River. The premise here is, the town sets aside the area to be where the growing will take place. Private growers come in, grow it, sell it, pay the town back for the rights to do that. But part of their contract is you have to remove a certain amount of nitrogen as part of your project. So, we're going to have a pretty good sense from these three half-acre experiments, just how likely it is that larger-scale aquaculture can be a significant answer to the nitrogen problem in all of our estuaries. Okay, inlet widening. This was a reasonably easy one to contemplate. It was recommended from the very first, that if you widen inlets, the flushing increases, and therefore, you've reduced a lot of nitrogen. Particularly in Boons Pond, we found 50% of the needed nitrogen reduction can be achieved through increased flushing. This is equivalent to searing 400 homes, which is huge, and we're talking like four millions and millions of dollars. And the nitrogen removal from that flushing and from agriculture in Boons Pond, as we've done the calculations, it would be enough, if it succeeds the way it's expected to, to not sewer the Monont Peninsula, which again, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars not to be spent. The project was voted in 2014, all the permits have been received, five years later, we're ready to go. Ray Jack is trying to do it at the same time as the Monont Road Project, where they're talking about ruins and preserving the road. The last thing you want to do is tear up a road twice and block it off for years at a time. So, hopefully, it won't take five years to get that project permitted, and the minute it is, I think he's ready to go, and this project will be ready to go. So, in fairly short order, we hope we'll have Boons Pond in a lot better shape, and we won't have to sewer it to get there. Now, this is an interesting one, in the past five years, the Innovative Alternative Nitrogen Reducing Septic System, which I won't say again, because it's a long phrase. IAs is what we call them, Innovative Alternative. Here's the premise. Three-quarters of the houses in this town are in a zone of contribution for one of these impacted estuaries. We are not going to sewer three-quarters of the houses in this town, and a lot of those houses are reasonably farely spread out, so you can't even contemplate searing them. What you can contemplate is, and what Falmouth is basically inventing, is some kind of an add-on to a septic system, that you would run your wastewater through your septic system and through the add-on, the innovative alternative system, and end up taking out enough nitrogen to make it worthwhile. The state right now approves IAs, but their kind of IAs, anybody who gets 19 milligrams per liter gets approved. Well, that doesn't do us any good, because it's just not enough nitrogen removal to be economically feasible. So, Falmouth has set out to basically invent or discover systems that will achieve a 75% reduction down to 10 milligrams per liter. We started this project in West Falmouth, along with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, where we went to the homeowners and had another incentive grant program. We said, we'll give you $10,000 if you put one of these things in. Well, 20 of them did, now we're up to 25. Where they put them in the ground, we dealt with it from day one. We put them in touch with all the possible vendors who think they could have a system that would work. They got to choose the vendor. We would be there with them when they were putting it in the ground, we would keep track of all the costs of putting it in the ground and cleaning up the landscape afterwards. We would keep track of the performance of the systems through monitoring, and by the end, we have learned a lot, and we are sort of inching in on systems that get this 10 milligrams per liter, that don't cost a zillion dollars to put in the ground, and that, in terms of maintenance and operation, are feasible. We're not there yet, but we're getting close. Now, the other, you might call it a demonstration project, but this one cost 40 million bucks. This was the searing of Little Pond. Basically, the premise here was, Little Pond was the worst estuary we had in terms of nitrogen overload, and it had the smallest sort of zone of contribution, immediate zone of contribution. So, the idea was, if we did every single house in that zone, we would test the idea that taking all the nitrogen out through searing would achieve the result you want. So, the town did that, much to its credit. The good news is, it didn't cost as much as anybody thought. The betterment to the homeowner is only $430 a year. That's the lowest betterment anybody on the state who has used its pays for any sewer. And it is that way, because the town stepped up to the plate and said, you know, we're not going to follow the state law that says we can charge 5% interest over 20 years to the homeowner, we want to charge zero to the interest to the homeowner, we want to spread it out over 30 years. And the town passed that, the legislature approved it, and that was the rules of the game for the people in Little Pond. So, instead of paying, it would have been like $1,200 a year betterment, they end up paying $435. Along with that came the growth control bylaw, which we had to do to get the 0% loan, but for some reason, growth control meant it was okay to tell everybody they could have up to four bedrooms. Most of the houses in the Heights and Maravista, many of them did not have four bedrooms, and for most of them, this was a way to add bedrooms, and we didn't tell the state that. We got the approval for the four bedrooms by right, which means they didn't have to go see the Board of Appeals, they didn't have to go see the planning board, they didn't have to go see anybody. They could build four bedrooms by right. And what this has meant to many homeowners there is, they could finally add on to their homes. Now, previously, they had very small lots, they couldn't add on because they needed a lot of ground for their septic system. You couldn't build on top of the septic system, so they couldn't build at all. So, a lot of folks have found now they can build, they can add on, and it's provided, as Ross Robbins tells me, a little bit of a building boom in that neighborhood. So, the other thing the town did in Little Pond, which has turned out to work out pretty well, low pressure or grinder pumps were required, because a lot of the homes were pretty low in terms of sea level elevation, and you, in order to pump things up, you needed a pump in each house, because we couldn't have nine pump stations up and down Maravista Avenue. So, we put them in, I think it's fair to say the town has been really forthcoming with the neighbors there, they gave them to them for free, there's a lot of other assistance that the town supplied to those neighbors, and frankly, I think they've worked out. You know, the immediate concern at the beginning, were they going to be noisy, were they going to be this, were they going to be that? I haven't heard much of that. I think people who I've talked to who have these are comfortable with them. So, we did Little Pond, we seared everything in the watershed, and now we're doing the testing part, which is, before and after the searing, the MBL and the US Geological Survey is measuring the difference. And we'll find out if, in theory, 88% of the nitrogen that needs to be removed is going to be removed once, now that they've all been hooked up, and once it's in the groundwater now, it gets through. So, we will know before these five years are up, whether searing to this extent in a watershed like this achieves the result we want to achieve. Oyster Pond, I see we have some Oyster Pond folks here. We took Oyster Pond and we said, here's a place where we can do a nice comparison. Comparison number one is, if you sewered it, how much it would cost to connect everybody up and send the wastewater to the main plant? Okay, so that's option one. Option two is, suppose you did it with IAs. What would you have to do to put an IA system together? Well, you have to have a monitoring plan that would be run by the town, you'd have to have an IA that gets you to the 10, which we're not quite there yet. And there's a whole bunch of what-ifs in both of these scenarios, but it's an ideal place to try, to sort of road-test both scenarios and see on paper, would IAs be comparable? Or would sewers be much more expensive? What are the pros and cons of each? We're going to be working that out with the neighbors and with the consultants, and in the next five years, I think we'll have an answer to that question. No decisions will be made until the questions are all answered, so we have a long way to go, but it's a good test case, and that's what we've been treating it as. Now, here's a sort of a success story of it. West Falmouth Harbor, which is in this plan, will meet its TMDL without searing. This was not the plans that the town had a few years ago. The town a few years ago was thinking, well, we better, we're going to have to sewer West Falmouth, because we'll never get the nitrogen out any other way. Well, it turns out, maybe we can get it out another way. Well, of course, the key way we're getting it out is the plant that the town operates just upstream of West Falmouth Harbor. That plant was upgraded in 2005 and 2016. The average nitrogen from the plant in years past was up to 23 milligrams per liter. It's now approaching 3. 3 is, I mean, if you had a glass of water here with 3, I could drink it. I may not want to, but I would drink it. 3 is pretty good. The EPA standard for drinking water is 10, so 3 is real good. And the fact that the plant is now producing in that neighborhood means that when the plume works its way through the ground into the harbor, what's now hitting the harbor at high nitrogen rates is going to, in the future, hit the harbor at a very low nitrogen rate. And that, combined with the oyster reef and the shellfish we've been relaying, and the project with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, all have contributed to nitrogen removal to the point where we have reached, at least when that plume gets through, we will have reached the TMDL, and that harbor should start looking good. This year, that harbor has started to look good. We got a very exciting email from DEP about a week ago, just saying, we've sent our crews out there, we see eelgrass in places we haven't seen eelgrass for 10 years, and we're seeing scallops in places where we haven't seen scallops since 1980. So, things are happening in West Falmouth, and things will continue to happen as that plume works its way through. So, if it succeeds, West Falmouth will be the first estuary in Cape Cod to meet its TMDL, and that makes this another sort of test project. If we reach the TMDL, does the harbor get better? We're going to find out. Now, you don't have to read this one, you just have to look at it. For five years, we have, I say "we," it's the town of Falmouth here, the Water Quality Management Committee partners in grants from all of these entities, state, federal, private, towns, these are all the partners that we've worked with on all these projects. Their funding has helped us pay for a lot of the projects we've talked about. The town has come ahead by almost $2 million in funding, between grants and reduction and funding, and a number of different sources that have contributed money to the town's efforts, and we are amazingly grateful to all of these people for all the work they've done with us and for us. So, that's the last five years. What we're rolling out here now is the next five years, the recommendations from the committee, the DPW, GHD, as to what we need to do in the next five years to meet the goals that we've set for ourselves. Okay, so the first goal is Great Pond. As you know, Little Pond, if you head east, the next thing you hit is Great Pond. And Great Pond is also a highly impacted, impaired water body. It's 26,455 pounds a year of nitrogen need to be removed. It's one of the highest, in fact, except for Walk White Bay, it is the highest of all the estuaries that are left to be done. If you look at the map, the colored map over on the side there, I think you'll get a sense of why we chose that area. All the lots that are in red, you can see them on both sides of Great Pond, those are lots of less than 7,800 square feet, they're very small lots. The blue ones are, they're sized between 7,800 and 10,000 square feet, they're still very small lots. The yellow ones are between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet, they're still pretty small lots. The white is above 15,000 square feet. So, what that tells you, what it tells us, is if you want to sewer, if you have to sewer someplace, sewer a place where it's really dense. It's a lot cheaper to build a sewer when houses are close together, and you get a lot more bang for your buck, because you're removing that much more nitrogen than you would be from areas that were more spread out. So, that's why Great Pond is the next big thing in our recommendation here. We've already done the piece over by Maravista, you see that skinny little stretch along Maravista, that was done when we did Little Pond, because it made no sense to sewer just to the edge of the watershed and not do the next 200 feet in the next watershed. So, that's already been done. And the rest of it is an area where you will get a big bang for your buck compared to doing almost any other part of town, just because of the density. So, we're going to do several things there. There will be alternatives, but we'd be recommending increased shellfish agriculture, we'd be recommending installing a permeable reactive barrier, which is an interesting thought, which I will describe just a little bit. It's basically a big wall in the ground between the ground, between where the salt water and the surface lie, a big wall of wood chips, or equivalent to wood chips, something that's loaded with carbon. And the premise here is that as nitrogen comes from And the premise here is that as nitrogen comes from home septic systems and heads toward the estuary, it gets intercepted by this wall and the nitrogen doesn't get to the estuary. We have a good site on Great Pond for this. We're hopeful that there'll be some funding to actually put it in the ground, and that is part of the recommended plan for Great Pond. The bog restoration is another piece of it. No one's quite sure how much nitrogen reduction comes from an effort like that, but we're going to find out. We now have people from US Department of Agriculture and Chris Neal over here, who are doing the before and after to see about the nitrogen reduction in that experiment. So, it may turn out to be big, it may turn out to be small, but we're going to have an answer. We're going to know. So, but even with all three of those options being implemented, the shellfish, the permeable active barrier, the Kerberi bug, we could not avoid the conclusion that sewering would still be required to get to where we want to go. So, what we're proposing, and obviously, this is up to the selectmen, the town meeting, and everybody else to take a look at, but is basically a two-phase approach. The first phase would be in pink up on the map here. We're calling it SubArea One, and it would be called Phase One because we would only propose installing that first, not do both of them together. It's mostly residential. There's eight hundred and eleven dwelling units on six hundred and two parcels. It's Upper Maravista, it's Keyegut Path, it's Perch Pond, it's Falmouth Port. As you can see, it's pretty dense. It's at the upper reaches of the estuary, which is where the nitrogen tends to be higher. SubArea Two, which would be done later on, that's in the green. That's, again, it's residential, it's Great Harbors, Sherwood Drive. Now, some of that is in the Green Pond watershed, five hundred and two parcels. Six hundred and eighty-seven are in the Great Pond watershed. So, when we do that, we're actually helping both watersheds. SubArea Three is this sort of yellowish business down at the bottom there, and we're not recommending doing that for several reasons. One is it's fairly low density. There's a certain number of lots that are wetlands and aren't buildable. A fair amount of it flushes directly into Vineyard Sound, so it really doesn't need to be dealt with. A lot of it's in the flood zone, which is a concern. And fifty years from now, a lot of it may be underwater. We're not going to be around to find out any. For a lot of reasons, it did not seem to be economically and environmentally desirable to go that far. So, if the town chooses to go with Phase One, and the town will need some additional, I'd say, resources, additional, additional bunch of things, which I'm going to tell you about. First thing to think about before we even get there is, you've got the existing sewer development area, which we have this euphemism called Ezra, if you don't mind. But it's basically, everything is sewed now already, Main Street, the hospital, all that area. And what we've been trying, and what Amy Lowell has been diligently calculating, is, as Ray says, when you can't build out anymore, you build up. Well, Falmouth's been building up. We had a bank where they probably had, you know, twenty visits a day to the bathroom. Now, we have a restaurant called Estia. There's a lot more sewage being, coming out of a restaurant than comes out of a bank. All up and down Main Street, where we have the redevelopment zoning there, you see small places turning into big places. You see retail uses becoming restaurant uses. You see apartments going in where they weren't before. The volume of septic that is being developed in the whole existing sewered area is a lot, and it's increasing. And the town is under an obligation, under its settlement agreement with the state, that when we reach eighty percent of the capacity that the plant and the discharge site have to take additional flow, we have to have a plan for what we're going to do when we get additional flow. Well, if the projects that Amy has in the pipeline, and see in the pipeline now, all come to fruition, we'll be at seventy-eight percent. So, this is not a someday kind of problem. It's a, it's a pretty soon kind of problem. So, if we want to do any redevelopment, if we want to continue to allow businesses in the existing sewer district and residential purposes in the existing sewer district to expand, we're going to have to address the plant and the discharge site. And if we want to add the T-Ticket and the Acapescot Sewer Area, we're going to have to address the plant and the discharge site. So, the plant's the easy part in a way. All it takes is money. A third sequencing batch reactor would be needed. If we're going to do anything in the Ezra area, or if we're going to do the T-Ticket Acapescot area, either one or both, the plant needs a third sequencing batch reactor. I can't tell you what it is, but I can tell you it's expensive. But it needs to be done if you want to go ahead in this direction. The other thing which we need, which is obviously a big issue because it's going to be, it's going to be in a location that somebody cares about, and that is an effluent discharge site. Right now, we have discharge site at the plant, which takes the Ezra, takes the existing flow from the previous sewer area. We have a discharge site right next to the plant, which we referred to for years as Site Seven. Now, it's called Fourteen and Fifteen. But it's right next to the plant, and that has enough capacity to take the flow from the Maravista Heights area around Little Pond. We would need more discharge capacity than either one of those is going to give us if we were going to go forward with any new sewer. So, we looked at seven sites between the Water Quality Committee, the DPW, GHD, and Wright Pierce. And I'm going to run through all seven, and I'm going to tell you about the three that we've sort of zeroed in on. But for whatever one we end up with, if any, it's going to depend on cost, capacity, how much flow it can take, what the regulators at DEP have to say about it, and what the community itself has to say about it. So, first, we'll tell you about the ones that we looked at and ended up not recommending. The Augusta parcel. This was something the town bought back in 2003. It's twenty acres adjacent to Falmouth Lumber. The town bought it for multiple purposes, and one of them was water resource protection and wastewater. But there's some problems with that one, which make it not probably where we want to go. First one is it would require a four-mile-long pipe. You would have to pump all the treated wastewater from the plant to this site. That's a four-mile-long pipe. But there's a deed restriction. When the town bought this, there was a deed restriction put on it, which said it could only treat effluent that came from the T-Ticket Acapescot area. So, it couldn't take any from the Tassa, from the downtown, I'm sorry, from Ezra downtown, and it couldn't take any from anywhere else. So, you have a discharge site that really doesn't take enough discharge to make it worth spending a lot of money to develop it. So, for that reason, I think we thought that one would not be recommended. The next one, which is a tough one, Joint Base Cape Cod. Your town manager and Ray have been valiantly fighting to get a handle on that area. It's, in concept, it's got a lot going for it. It's right, it's next to us, it has an existing treatment plant, it has existing discharge site, it has lots of things. What it has is a spaghetti of ownership and groups that have interest in it, and it has a lot of shortcomings. The plant that it has is nice, but it's ancient. The idea that we could send our treated effluent up there on the surface is appealing, but when you think about it, we'd have to build a seven-mile pipe from our plant to the pipe at the base that currently goes, that's that red line that currently goes to the canal. And if we set our treated effluent there, we would basically use up all the capacity. So, any of the other towns that were involved wouldn't have any capacity, and of course, they would want some capacity. So, you would then have to build a whole new pipe, parallel to the existing pipe to the treatment, to the discharge site, which would cost somebody a lot of money. And then, when you get to the discharge site, you would have to raise the amount of discharge that the state currently allows to be discharged there. And this is just the beginning of the problems up there. They can give you nightmare scenarios of trying to deal with the base, who's in charge? The base doesn't want any part of this anymore. I can understand why. They want some private entity or some other entity to come over and take it all over. Well, so even right now, you can't say who's going to be in charge of it much longer. And the town of Barnstable is already stuck its, or in saying, we'd like it. Well, okay, this is, you know, this is fraught with peril. And so, for us to count on it right now just didn't seem prudent. And the town will stay in the fight because there's some assets up there that are important to us, drinking water for starters. But for the purpose of identifying a site that we can count on soon, this ain't it. Falmouth Country Club. We looked at that, and there's a few just problems with that, which got it off the list. It's five miles from the treatment facility, so you'd have to run a pipe all the way from the plant down to it. If you're going to do it there, you probably want to do an underground system, which costs a lot more to put in. It has to be replaced and maintained, replaced from time to time. You would also disrupt some of the golfing and recreational use that goes on there. And there's a town-owned site real nearby that doesn't have these problems. So, we thought, let's leave the golfers alone. Okay, so these are the sites that we've looked at and we think are worth talking about some more. First one is former Site Seven, now it's called Fourteen and Fifteen. Town already owns it. It's adjacent to the treatment plant, so you don't have to go long pipes back and forth. The discharge is outside the West Falmouth Harbor watershed, so you're not impacting West Falmouth Harbor. The question of how it could be shaped, how the infiltration rate is, they get into technical stuff here, which are being looked at by GHD as we speak. So, the question is, how much could it take? And, you know, what would be the configuration that would make it work? So, we don't have an answer to that yet, but we've asked the question and we're chasing it down. So, we'll have an answer. We do have an answer as to the cost. In $2,018, it would have been $1.9 million. So, it's far and away the least expensive of the options we're looking at. The next one is the Allen parcel. That is pretty close to the Falmouth Country Club, and it's the one we chose to pursue instead of the Falmouth Country Club. It's four miles from the wastewater treatment plant. Town already owns it. A lot of it's set aside for conservation, but a good chunk of it is set aside for municipal use. So, it's usable. When the town bought it, it was understood that municipal use would be a factor here. It does have adequate, in fact, more than adequate capacity. It could take the T-Ticket Acapescot area and the Ezra area, and it would have a buffer zone. So, capacity-wise, it's pretty good. Cost-wise, it's almost $13 million, but that's, it's still on the list. Okay. The third one has so much going for it until you get to the price tag. And that's an outfall. Now, years ago, everybody said outfalls are bad, and they were right. Outfall, when you were putting primary or secondary treated sewage into a limited area, you would expect to get bad results, and you probably would. But things have changed. No one is talking about putting that kind of discharge into any water body anymore. Again, we're down to the three parts per milligram for discharge. So, ocean outfall became a more reasonable approach, but it was still illegal until the Town of Falmouth and the Brothers Bay Coalition went up to the State House a few years ago and said, yeah, things have changed. We might want to use this for discharge. Because what we'd be discharging would be as close to clean, fresh water as you could be concerned about. The state law did change. It is now legal to do this with, obviously, with the conditions. You want to make sure what you're putting in meets that. But the interesting experience that they had in Boston, where they put, what, 300 million gallons a day of secondarily treated wastewater, not tertiary, secondary, they put that in a pipe 21 miles out off of Boston, and they studied the hell out of it from people from MBL and everybody else who was looking at that assiduously. And what they found is it had no effect. The stuff, because the ocean was so big and the currents were sufficient, it had no impact. So, the fear that you're going to hurt the larger water bodies by putting treated effluent in it has pretty well subsided. So, we have two sites in Falmouth where this could be contemplated. One of them is right outside of West Falmouth Harbor. It would be a fairly short pipe, but it would have to be a mile out because you want to get it out where the currents are. The other one would be down near where Ron lives, in Knobbska, where the town had a vigorous discussion about this back in 1979 and decided, forget about it. But the discussion would be very different now. We're not talking about the same kind of untreated effluent. But the cost is what is the barrier here. The consultants have told us that Brothers Bay would cost 70 million and Knobbska would cost 63 million. It's an awful lot of money to spend, even though you get no neighbors, you get no environmental bad impact, and you get unlimited capacity, all great things. So, we're still looking at it. So, that's the recommendation as far as what we need. How could we pay for it is going to be the next best question. And our experience from the last time around is pretty much the guideline that we're recommending for this one. In 2014, the Little Pond and Boins Pond project were funded by the town, which incurred new debt when old debt was paid off. We all remember that. It went to the voters, the voters liked it, town meeting liked it, everybody liked it. We would recommend doing that again. And you've already beat us to the punch here. In your capital plan for 2024, you've set aside, or 25, you've set aside $60 million for these purposes, which is terrific because it means we can look ahead to planning on doing it, and it means we can plan on doing it without raising taxes because neither you nor we have any interest in going to the voters and saying, let us tell you how we're going to raise your taxes. Fiscal 25 is not that far away. The voter, town meeting and the voters would both have to act on this the year before. We can get, presuming the program is still there, state revolving funds at zero percent loan again. And there's a new funding source out there, which should be up and running and available by that time, which is the Cape Town Islands Water Protection Fund. That's the 2.75% surtax on Airbnb and motels and all those folks that goes into a fund that is operated by the state revolving fund. They haven't worked out the details of who gets how much, and that will obviously be a great bone of contention. But I think the basic premise that a town that is ready with a plan and has put its own money up will be at the front of the line for getting any of that money. own money up will be at the front of the line for getting any of that money. So that's our five-year plan, if you'll pardon the phrase. We have some thoughts about what comes next and, and we'll share them with you. Obviously, what comes next after Phase One of Great Pond would be Phase Two of Great Pond. That would be the second half of the T-Ticket Acapescot sewer service area. It's shown in green on the map here. That's eleven hundred and eighty-nine parcels. Half of them are, roughly half of them are in Great Pond and slightly fewer are in Green Pond. So in combination with agriculture and restoration efforts in Mill Pond, Phase Two would remove enough nitrogen from Green Pond so that little or no sewer ring would be required in Davisville. Davisville, as you can see on the map, is less dense by far. It's, it's like, the average parcel is point five acres, whereas in Acapescot and T-Ticket, the average parcel is point three acres. So it's a lot less dense and, as I say, if you can take out five hundred and two parcels worth of nitrogen with, with the alternatives as well involved, we can, we can comfortably say that Davisville wouldn't need to be sewed. Now, the, the Eight Hundred Pound Gorilla is Wacoit Bay. It's the most complicated water body. All the rest of these are mostly within, in fact, all within Falmouth Town borders. Some, some of their watersheds extend a little bitzy up into the base or someplace, but basically they're all Falmouth and they're all one, one watershed. Wacoit Bay is forty-eight watersheds and three towns, none of which have demonstrated great working together capacity at all times in the past, but this time will be different. We, we have already agreed to pursue an intermunicipal agreement with the three towns, Sandwich, Mashpee and Falmouth. We've already put our contribution on the table. The selectman voted for this a month or so ago, more than that now. Our share of the cost of ascertaining who's responsible, which town is responsible for how much of the Wacoit Bay nitrogen removal goal. So we'll have that going as soon as the other towns pony up. We'll have a real number to shoot for and, and we'll have a real complicated project to deal with. It won't be, it won't be in the next five years, probably won't be in the next ten, but it's, it's coming. And, and I think that some of you, I hope, will be around to deal with it and, and we won't. Next, this, beyond the, the next five years, the next ten years, we, we and the DPW and, and the consultants and, and the town have been planning for the next twenty years. And, and you can see this, I'm not going to go into it, but it gives you a sense of, it, it sets dates and guidelines for things to happen in order for future things to happen. It's an ambitious project, obviously. It's, it's a lot of money. It's something the town has made it quite clear they want to do. It's something the state and the DEP have made it quite clear they want, they want us to do. We are way ahead of almost any other town in Cape Cod in doing this. I want to give, give a little pat in the back to this town. Aside from Chatham, which has financial resources sufficient to do about anything they want, they've, they've got a, a plan going that will sewer the whole town. We, we're not like that and we, we weren't going to do that. Ten, ten years ago, we looked at a plan like that and we said, no way are we going to do that. Instead, we took, we took the harder route. We said, let's try everything else. And, and we have basically, while, while everyone else has been writing reports and, and analyzing things and holding meetings, Falmouth has been putting stuff in the ground and stuff in the water and measuring it before and during and after and coming up with what works and what's economically feasible. So when we come up with a plan like this, we're only, we're searing less than half of what they were proposing ten years ago. And we're going to get to this, to the same place, we think, and we're going to get to it in a much more environmentally sound way. So Falmouth, take off your hats to yourself because Falmouth did something no other place did. This is the kind of stuff DEP should have been doing, EPA should have been doing, Cape Cod Commission, any number of entities should have been doing it, but they didn't. Falmouth did and Falmouth should be very pleased with itself. With that, we thank you and, and all the entities that are represented here today for your support. And we're happy to take questions, comments and discussion.
Thank you so much. That's really, you know, just a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this and really just offering, you know, I think what this board really appreciates is you offer, you have it narrowed down, really push the ones that maybe are near and dear to your heart, but are really presenting all of these options with the pros and cons, so everybody can really weigh in on it and you can make a decision as a community. So I'll, I'll start with this board if you have some questions and then we'll open it up. Peter, will you be able to, I think one microphone should handle it?
Sure. So taking this to the family clock level, is there a place, for example, on the town website? I know a person will say my septic is two years, is a year or so. How do I go about finding out whether I'm on the list and say I'm on a, a potential place that's going to get seared in three years? What do I do with my septic that's going to have trouble with that?
We have John Waterbury from the Board of Health who has thought about that and I know the Board of Health has thought about it. Could you give him the microphone and, or you could step up to the mic here and let John answer that?
What the Board of Health has done historically with that, and if we use New Silver Beach as an example, we nursed people along when we knew definitely that we were going to sewer. And we did the same thing with the Admiralty Motel here, that when we knew that we were going to be putting in pipe in, in the future, we worked an arrangement with, between those entities and DEP that allowed us to nurse people along. And I think that's something that we would anticipate trying to do as these projects come up.
Just a quick follow-up. So would it be sort of a regular thing to expect if I came to the town to start purging or the first part of the process, is the person at the counter would say, let me move into a disaster with the Board of Health because you're in a sensitive area and you may not need to start that right now? Is that how it works?
Well, I, I'm not sure how we would do it in the future, but, I mean, there, there has to be a reasonable lead time. In other words, we have to have actually identified a, a major project, put a timeline on it so that when someone does come to the Board of Health, they can say, we know that we're going to start digging in this area of town at a certain date and therefore we can try and keep you going until we get there. Now, if we're talking about Wacoit Bay twenty years from now, that clearly, if someone has a problem in Wacoit Bay, they're going to need to deal with it now.
I have a question here. Is the reason why sort of that Phase One is recommended first because it's higher up in the watershed? I mean, it just seems like it's some ways a Phase Two because it's, it's impacting two separate water bodies. You know, if you're looking at a finite amount of money within, say, a ten-year period, did, did the committee look at one, you know, the sort of the, the bang for the buck of one versus two? I know ultimately we may be, we're heading in the direction of having to do both potentially, but can you just explain a little bit more why one was chosen as the first and two was the second?
Okay, part of it was the, um, some of one is actually going to go down Main Street. So some of that goes that way, so we save a little there. It, it, the nitrogen density, so to speak, is higher in the one area, in one. The closer you get to the entrance of the wa, of the water body, the lower the nitrogen density, so to speak. So, so your bang for the buck wise, the upper reach gives you a lot more than the lower reach. And part of it was strictly economics. It's a little, it's cheaper, cheaper to do that one than the second one and, and you've only given it sixty million dollars, which is, of course, more money than I ever imagined. But, but when you start paying for all this stuff, you, you, you see how limited you are.
Since we also received the advantage of Oyster Pond, I saw that that was a lot less of as, in the time table of your projects here, where, where does that qualify to what you would pick the point on there?
Well, I, I think the threshold question for Oyster Pond is, is it, is it, can we, is it able and desirable to pursue the IA option there or the sewer option? If, if you, you have to decide that first. If the IA option, if it's the IA option, then you don't worry about it. If it's a sewer option, then you say, well, when does it get in line? It's exactly your question. Realistically, the Phase One and Two solve so, big area problems and, and Oyster Pond would have to get in line. For the next five years, there is no line since we don't have a discharge site and we don't have a plant that can take it. So it's not an immediate issue. There, there will be some dracking, I suspect, at some point. You know, because, you know, maybe, maybe they'll want to push themselves ahead in line, I don't know.
So I guess the other, we mean, we did say is that the projects are pretty poor in this timeline, but once it really only can be done to sewer, the IA systems just are not going to work.
Right.
These places, because the dams themselves are all, the lot sizes themselves are all not going to get any, 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 so we don't have a choice between IA and searing services.
Right. Yeah, the, the economists don't work and, and the space doesn't work.
So, yeah, the question is, another question I already left. The end of the peninsula where the septic is, that portion close to the ocean, the rising tide is expected to tip over that area. It just seems like there's going to be a long twenty-year period where all the tides are rising, the septic is failing, but the house will be otherwise serviceable. It seems a shame that kind of giving us people to a little bit of an early exit by not searing it. I wonder if there'll be any flexibility with the, with the, with, 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 with this again, if it was going to, you know.
Right. Virginia, do you want to say, you want to talk about that?
I have to say, one thing, one thing I think that was left out of the discussion of the southernmost tips of the peninsula is, is those are mostly direct discharge areas. Their groundwater doesn't go into the abeyments. It goes directly into the Antucket Sound. So that, it, it doesn't have any bearing on the problem we're trying to solve.
So, so the, 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 the,[1482.15]
But it, it has to be somewhere over 50%. And for you not to be incorporating this into these studies just seems like you're dragging your feet in order to get more of these pipes in the ground and to get more revenue out of these people. I also think it's, it's unfair the way it's paid for. Perfect example of that is Born's Pond. Now, I have read the S Mass report several times. I'm sure a very small percentage of the people in this room have. But Brian Howe said, and the same thing you repeated, that widening the inlet could reduce the amount of sewer-ing by 50%. But he also said in the S Mass report that simply widening Little Pond from 10 feet to 20 feet could have reduced the sewer-ing there by 30%. And that was before we ever knew anything about the possibility of shellfish. And while I'm on shellfish, we're sewer-ing in this town, first off, you took the shellfish away from Ron and the Water Committee and basically put it in kind of a half a limbo for a few years so we could kick the can further down the road. But we're sewer-ing from west to east and we're testing out the shellfish from east to west, you know? Somewhere in the middle, everything's going to meet, and we're all going to realize that we've sewered too much and an effort, enough effort wasn't put into it to reduce that number. And we're also going to know that a large amount of the burden, which in the end benefits the whole town, is placed on a very small percentage of the population, which is totally unfair. But you can go ask anybody in Falmouth Bites or Little Pond to look at their water bills, especially if they irrigate, and you'll find out that that's absolutely true. There's a long time between now and 2024 or 2025. I'm hoping that the people of this town can get together and, and find a, a different way to fund this thing, to spread it out over the population of the town and rather than costing such a small percentage of the town such a, a large amount of money. But we'll see. Thanks.
Well, you've, you've hit a number of points. I'll just hit that last one in terms of who, who pays for what here, because it's good to know. For any of the infrastructure that doesn't immediately connect to a single individual home, like all, all the improvements at the plant, all the identifying and preparing and operating a discharge site, pipes to the plant, pipes to the discharge site, pipes up and down the main streets, that's all paid by the whole town tax base and not by any individual homeowner. The only thing the individual homeowner pays for is 70% of the cost of running the pipe down his street, and then he pays the cost of hooking up to that pipe. But all the rest of the cost is paid for by the taxpayers as a whole. Any other questions? Can you add to it?
Well, the betterment was raised, I think it was doubled, from the original sewer project, which was Main Street and Woods Hole. They paid about 25%, did they not? I know it was raised considerably.
That was when the federal government and the state paid 90% of the cost of the project. Things have changed in 35 years.
Regardless, there's still, homeowners are paying a, a bigger bite, especially, of course, the ones that don't get sewored. And then just one point I'd like to add is when we bought that golf course, we were told that it was going to be used for sewer discharge, and now we're told that we can't. I mean, we're sinking a lot of money into that thing that was supposed to be making us money, and of course, it's not. And now we're told we're not doing it because it's five miles away. I think it was five miles away when we bought it, too. But just another point.
Okay. Anybody else with a question or a comment?
And so can you just talk a little bit more about sort of the process for what your committee is looking for? I mean, our timeline is fairly short in terms of getting something completed. So you can just, can you just explain any other, you know, public hearings or any, or way for people to kind of share input with your committee if they're hearing this tonight or they watch it later on, how best to sort of share some of their thoughts or concerns or to get further information and what your process would be?
Fair enough. Well, what you, what you see in front of me here is, is the, the report, and it's, it's gargantuan. We have a summary, a 10-page summary, which we would be happy to hand out to anybody who wants to pick one up when they leave the room. We'll, we'll have as many copies of those at every one of our meetings as, as anybody wants. And those, they're, they're sort of like this, but it's, it's pretty substantive. I mean, it gets you right into the details. I expect we'll be having one of our own meetings devoted entirely to public comment on this plan. And obviously, we first want our comments from the board, but we'll incorporate them that we received from anybody else. We have three months, basically, and a lot of work to be done between now and then, but three months is enough time to, to get input. So we, like I said, we're thrilled to get it from the board. We'll devote a meeting, probably the first one in October, to this, this purpose. And anybody else? We have a website. You're welcome to send emails.
And will you post that 10-page sort of summary on your website so folks can, to it?
We may, we may have already, have we posted it yet?
The entire document has been posted out last night, so there's been a, a 30-page summary. There's a hard copy of the report and all of the analyses available in our control. There's here, there's all the pieces on our, our, our.
And will there be one at Town Hall, did you say?
I think, I think there's one at Town Hall now. Okay. Sure.
Quick question in terms of the process. What are the decision steps and when do they happen? And specifically, I'd like to know what role does the town play in deciding exactly what happens as we move forward?
Well, by, by the end of this year, there will be a finalized version of this document that, that we're, that we all see here. After that, it'll, it'll be pretty much the selectmen in town meeting as each step has to be addressed in order to have it done along the timeline. We'll, we'll go to the board, we'll be going to the town meeting, we'll be going to the voters, saying, here's the next step. Do you want to pay for it? And here's how we're proposing to pay for it? And, and here's what we're proposing to do. The Oyster Pond piece is sort of on its own track because it's the only one where two options are, are being weighed. And, you know, one, one, you know, designing a sewer system is clearly a known, a known element. They do it all the time. Designing an IA system is something new under the sun, and, and we're, we're approaching it in as much detail as we possibly can so that, so that we really are comparing apples to apples when, when we, when we come to the end of that.
That last part, I think, as you, you know, is what concerns me most is how, how that decision is made to recommend one over the other. I want to be clear. By the way, my name is Dick Hale. I live at Treetops right on Oyster Pond. I've been following the, the work of this committee for, I don't know, two or three years, and it's pretty impressive what they've done, obviously. But I think it's really important that people understand a decision to go to the IA septic systems because they're new, they're untested, there is risk, no matter how small it is. And as you said, sewers are a very known quantity to the town. These other systems are not. And I, I just think it's really important that anyone who's making a decision on this understands all of that about the, the septics, and I trust that you will.
So just a few more comments on process because the process on the draft CWMP for Oyster Pond is slightly different than the process on the draft update of the South Coast CWMPs. So when the draft Oyster Pond CWMP is filed with the state, there is a formal comment period, and then there, the state will generate its own comments. It will solicit that from a wide range of state agencies. And then they will issue a certificate which will outline areas that in MIPA and the state's opinion need further work or, or data or demonstration. And then ultimately, and there's no deadline, that will lead to a final CWMP for Oyster Pond, and that will be the decision document. So you're, you're, you're rolling a couple of years into that line of decisions for Oyster Pond. For the CWMP for the South Coast estuaries, we've already gone through the draft and the final, and we're now, because this is a really 40-year project, we are updating after five years what we've done and what we think is the next piece of that total project. We will get comments back and a certificate from the state, and we believe that it will help frame the studies for specifically the Great Pond watershed. When you read through the update and you get to the chapter on recommendations, you will see that there's a fairly clearly laid out list of the engineering jobs that we think still need to be done in order to develop a concrete plan for the Great Pond watershed.
Bill Kerfoot, Oyster Pond.
Thank you. Relative to the IA systems, when the comment is made, well, we don't know if they work or not, the IA systems have been tested now for periods of over 15 years. They're, just recently, John, from the Board of Health during our review of systems, mentioned at least four now do meet the 10 milligram per liter. I talk frequently with George Hoyfelder. I think it would be good, since he's finishing up his report now on current status of denitrification systems, for that to be more widely spread to people. But it is a situation where, as you realize and have always stated, we want to solve the problem of the septic system so that we get the average system to remove nitrogen and not have to deal with the excess of loading that we have currently.
Well, the working group is going to be meeting with Oyster Pond Environmental Trust and with the, the Treetops Association on October 5th to get into the weeds on this topic. And I, I don't think we need to spend all of tonight on it. We'll be doing that then and for a long time afterwards. I mean, right now, Oyster Pond has no immediate focus. There is no discharge site available for their sewage, and there is no plant that's ready to take it. On the other hand, there isn't an IA system off the, that we can take off the shelf and say, this works for you. We haven't figured out a municipal management system that, that would make the DEP happy. We've gotten darned close to it, but we're not there yet. So neither option is ready for prime time, and neither's going to be ready for prime time for a number of years. But we're going to be working on it until we get to the point where we either say, you know what? IA's can go in here and it won't be any more of an aggravation to the homeowner than a sewer, and it won't be any more cost than a sewer. And if that's the answer, then we talk about IA's. Or we say, you wait till there's some capacity at the plant and, and you wait until we have a discharge site, and you might wait 10 years. That's the other option. We're not there yet, and, and we're not going to be put there yet until we do a lot more homework.
Sam?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just have Sam come, because I was waiting.
I brought this issue up a month ago, and that's, I feel like, I understand your charge just to look at the nitrogen loading in our estuaries. We have the coastal resilience, the actions that we need to worry about coastal resilience. And I just wondered, who's responsible for looking at the two needs and seeing whether there's not some synergy between the, 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 the trunk river sewer line, which is very close to sea level, and which is already starting to be vacationing. There may be some situation like lining a sewer pipe or whatever, but if they're looking at trying to reroute that pipe, well, it's going to go back up over the top of the Treetops and Oyster Pond. Seems like that's an opportunity for them to hook up to a sewer system that we're going to have to put in anyway. The question I'm asking really is, who's responsible for looking at those both needs and thinking this solution makes sense for the town?
Well, we're, we're, we talked to Ray, and we meet with Ray quite a lot, and that, that particular pipe and its lifetime is his immediate problem. But, but you're quite right. If it went somewhere else, maybe Oyster Pond could hook into it. That doesn't solve the Oyster Pond problem, which is, we don't have plant capacity, we don't have discharge capacity. So the fact that they could hook in would, would be a piece of their puzzle, but not, not the defining piece. Charlie?
Just, no.
Oh, John.
Just one brief comment about the IA systems. We're proposing to DEP a fairly innovative program to make that work on a watershed basis. And so we really won't know whether that's a feasible option until we get a reaction from DEP.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot, a lot of moving parts and a lot of parts that haven't been, that are not there yet. So, Charlie?
I was just going to observe that with sea level rise, particularly in the outer years, and we're not sure exactly when this will happen, but some of the barriers that create these things such as Oyster Pond may not exist, which would change the nitrogen situation considerably. Or there may be breaches that we choose not to fill that would change that.
Sure.
Those, but they may be, in time when that happens, that may be sufficiently in the future that it doesn't obviate the need to address the nitrogen problem in the nearer term, say, 30 years.
Involuntary, involuntary inlet widening.
Is not, is clearly part of the future at some point.
Yeah, it would be.
Eric, I have a question for you. Can you just talk a little bit so that it's clear for folks? You know, because you're proposing in the next five years, you know, a number of potential things that are kind of going on simultaneously or in, you know, close proximity to each other. Can you just explain in terms of the process? You know, you're, you're indicating that, you obviously have to have the capacity for whatever you're doing in terms of sewer-ing. So in terms of your proposal, you're proposing, just again, looking at the resources that are available, would be the expansion of our capacity, solving our capacity problem, not solving, but addressing the next stage of it, be really the first part of it as we understand, you know, we have a plan for the second part where that capacity is going to, or where that flow is going to come from to use that capacity, but would the, the first kind of structural piece be building of that capacity, expanding that capacity?
Yeah, realistically, we, we have enough capacity to take care of Ezra for the next few years before it hits the 80% mark, and then the state says, what are you going to do about capacity? So we, so we have to have that answer in the next few years. Before we do any new, new sewer-ing of Phase One, just Phase One, we have to have an answer to the state of, is your plant able to take this much extra and where are you going to discharge it? So all those have to be answered for any of it to go forward. It's, it's, it's a complete package. And since we know the money won't be available until 2024 to do anything substantial, we've got a few years to put the package together. But, but you're right, at the end of the day, it, it's a package with all those elements addressed and not just theoretically addressed. You know, we have a site, we're going to do it on that site, we have the money to put the plant upgrade in. Here's the lady who knows more about it than I do, so let her take it.
I don't know more than you about this. I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent, and your question.
Was I standing up, Amy?
Yep.
I was standing up. I thought you asked before I said that.
Stand, stand up.
There is, in the 10-year capital plan, there is a line item for wastewater plant upgrade that would address the sequencing batch reactor addition that Eric mentioned as well as other basic upgrades at the wastewater plant. So that's a 10 to $19 million capital item that is ahead of the $60 million capital item. And that will be, it's in the current wastewater division capital plan, which will be incorporated into the town's plan, and we'll be presenting that in the next couple of years as opposed to the 25, 2025 timeframe.
Eric, since we're going to be incorporating that 60 million into our capital, is that even provided to take care and do it without a vote?
Oh, no, it, it would, it's in your plan, so presumably the board has chosen to adopt it, but it would have to go to town meeting, it would have to go to the voters before, before it actually happened.
And it would still be, like, some type of, 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 of?
It would, it would, it would have that name to it, but we would make it loud and clear. It's within the window of opportunity, as we like to say, and it will, it would not raise your tax rate. That's been the successful approach that we adopted in the past, and we, we can't imagine not sticking to it.
Any other comments or questions from anyone here? So I was thinking it might be helpful, I just know that, you know, for, for most of us, you know, I think most people understand that this is going to be required, but it might be helpful if we're able to, and I'm not putting this on the committee, but just something for us to think about, to, to give a little bit of a, a quicker reference point to look at some of those numbers, exactly kind of what Amy's talking about, that 60 million, so people can kind of wrap their head around what we're talking about in terms of these kind of, you know, you hear all of these numbers and they sound daunting, even though, you know, I remind people that we just did, you know, about $100 million to projects about, you know, at that level, that really went incredibly well and we're, we're on budget and on time. So even with big numbers like that, it's very doable if you have a, a well-thought-out, well-managed project. But it might be helpful, just as the public is being able to take a look at this, you know, not many people are going to be able to have the time to sit down and go through all of this, but to just have a little bit of a sense of the, the timeline and the funds sort of associated with some of those, you know, a little bit more of a holistic view so that they understand there's already some money around what Amy's talking about in the pipeline. So it might be something that your office, Mr. Suso, could perhaps work on, that we'd have a place on the website that somebody could take a quick look at to, in concert with what is presented by the committee.
Yeah. I'm very happy to have him do it.
Yeah.
We, we, part of these, it's a work in progress, and we're, it's only in the last six months that we really had numbers to attach to any of these things. And they're not, you know, they're, they're still being, they're still being refined, and there's choices along the way. Like, if you did all IA, all, I'm sorry, all low pressure, for example, you save a lot of money in some ways, but on the other hand, then you're buying a lot of equipment and handing it to people. There's some pros and cons. If, if you're going all gravity, which is much more expensive, you got to find nine lift station sites, and I, you know, how many people want a lift station next door to their house? You know, these are the kind of judgment calls that have to be made before you can say, here's what it's going to cost. And, and so we're, we're in the throes of that, and the numbers are still in progress.
Yes, you know, knowing that no one's going to, no one's going to hold you to it. But I know for most people, at the end of the day, everyone wants our estuaries to be cleaner. We all understand that it, it has some level of significant investment, but I think a lot of folks, when it comes down to it, are looking sort of at those numbers to get a sense of, of what the scale of a project is. So it might just be helpful to, to put that out there. Sue?
Just, you know, as we're winding down here, I, I want to, you know, just put some gratitude to the committee. I mean, what I hear in all these responses is that every committee member is treating these questions as if it's their question, their house, their money. And along with that really personal touch and 360 view of these complicated and financially and financially big, you know, issues, is also the incredible amount of professional expertise. So, I just, you know, on behalf of the board, I'm sure everybody feels the same way.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, thank you so much for all you worked for such a long time, both with the State House leadership, lots of late meetings, lots of phone calls, lots of personal research, and the, and also the experts. So, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, can I second that? You know, this is the only reason this could have happened in this town, is because we have people like this. I mean, we got Ron, who, when he's not working for us, he's working for Vietnam, telling them how to deal with shellfish. We got Tom, who's a professor of environmental science at a university, Virginia, who's done everything once and very well. You know, John retired from HOE, but he's, he's, he's as sharp as you can get on, on this kind of stuff, and asking the right questions. Where's the rest of my people?
Engineer, engineer.
Thank you, right, an engineer who retired from federal government. He was smart enough to buy a house way up in the hill overlooking Oyster Pond, so he's ready. But, you know, every one of them just, just brings such a wealth of talent. Matt isn't even here, he's at HOE, he does groundwater for a living. No other town in Cape Cod could, could have brought this kind of talent together, and the amount of time and energy, you're right, that these, this committee has given, really, it's been an enormous pleasure, and I think the town is getting a great deal out of it.
We are, thank you. And so, from this board, I just, would you prefer, if we, if we put it on for another agenda, and we provide something sort of by way of, or just provide something to the committee by way of comments or thoughts, so that you have something concrete that you can take as you work through the draft? Is that what would be helpful?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sometime in the next month, if you could.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
We'll do that, thank you very much. Great, I will give folks just a two-minute break, so that, I know a lot of folks are probably going to exit before we start doing the articles, so I'll just adjourn for two minutes. Our agenda, we have, just want to make sure I don't have anything else. We're going to vote the articles and execute the warrant for the November twenty nineteen town meeting. And...
I would move that we add Articles One through Six to the warrant.
Second.
Those are none of the articles that I think we have the jurisdiction to make any edits on, and I would go ahead and add those on.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's One through Six. Okay, so I'll just go through Article Seven.
Petitioners' articles, so we really have no choice but to follow.
Right, but to put it on. Did I have a motion for that?
I'm moving Article Seven to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Eight.
Article is a request of Board of Selectmen for the sum of money for the health insurance stabilization fund. I'm going to add Article Eight to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Nine, which is to see if the town will authorize a Board of Selectmen to acquire an option to purchase a parcel of land in the northwest section of the town suitable for construction of a new northwest fire station, to appropriate a sum of money for this purpose, to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended on, do, or I think I was supposed to say, or do or take any other action on the matter. And this is obviously a bit of a placeholder for the process that we've talked about that's ongoing related to that.
Move approval.
Potential project, thank you.
I did have one question on that article, as to how likely it is that we're going to have enough information. I mean, is this a likely placeholder, or is this just a possible one?
Mr. Suso, do you want to address that?
I think it's, it's highly likely that we'll have the recommendation from the consultant that's under contract now to identify three to five significant sites, and this would allow us to tie that up rather than take no action and see the market value of those parcels potentially move them upward as a result of the analysis that's being done, and not be able to take definitive action on behalf of the board.
I second the motion then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding costs related to government access programming, and to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended, or do or take any other action on the matter. And this is obviously to address some potential funding issues that we know are coming because of some changes at the federal government level, so that we can protect the...
FCTV.
FCTV and the fact that the public gets a great value from that service.
I'm going to add Article Ten to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article Eleven, to take, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease, purchase, or take by eminent domain a portion of land at eighty-four Main Street in Falmouth Village for municipal purposes now or formerly owned by Bank of America, and being a portion of the present rear parking lot with approximately two hundred and seventy-three feet of frontage on Catherine Lee Bates Road. Any questions from the board on this?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease, purchase, or take by eminent domain a parcel of land at the intersection of Worcester Court and Spring Bars Road in Falmouth, containing point nine five acres and now or formerly known by Wilbur and Sharon, oh, excuse me, owned by Wilbur and Sharon Mueller for municipal purposes.
I think Clyde does warrant some explanation of what these two articles are about.
Agreed.
And I think the articles could be an and/or situation, depending on what the needs are, but as opposed to stealing the thunder, Mr. Suso, if you want to just...
Certainly, thank you, Selectmen Jones and members of the board. As, as the board's fully aware, we have a challenge to provide adequate amounts of off-street parking, particularly in our busiest seasons, and we have a very limited opportunity for available parcels to maximize providing that municipal parking service. And both of these parcels, the, the second one, just read, proposed Article Twelve, is at the corner of Worcester Court and Spring Bars Road. It's an existing paved area that would have great potential for lease, purchase, potentially for a, an off-street municipal lot, and as well as the, that rear portion of the Bank of America existing parking area. And I have had a preliminary contact with the Cape, Cape Cod RTA as far as running a potential shuttle bus service to those and other locations in the town, to different downtown, Woodsole areas, other commercial areas, as well as the beaches during the beach season, so that we could expand the opportunities for this off-street parking. It would also serve to expand opportunities for the town's many special events, particularly during the busiest season, and it'd also connect these locations with the existing school parking areas that we utilize. We want to expand the utilization of those existing spaces as well. So, this is part of, part of adding a, potentially expanding the existing network of off-street parking and taking advantage of opportunities when they present themselves, as opposed to losing the chance because properties would be developed and therefore taken out of the potential for municipal off-street parking.
I'm going to move Article Twelve to the warrant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next, Article Thirteen, thank you, Mr. Suso, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to supplement the operation of the new senior center, and to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended. Obviously, this is to address the fact that we anticipate an opening in the next several months of our new senior center. It's a much larger facility, expanded programming. As we've had a discussion over the many years that we've been talking about this, we know that there'll be some other costs associated with operating this new senior center.
So, this is an adjustment to the fiscal year budget two thousand twenty, right?
Correct.
Two thousand twenty-one will, of course, be built into that. Move Article Thirteen as printed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to initiate the process of disposition of the wind turbines, which includes dismantling, relocation, engineering, permitting, and any other related costs, and to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended. Mr. Suso, do you just want to speak more specifically? I think everyone knows about the turbines, but...
Certainly.
... where we are at in the process.
As the board's fully aware, you have voted some time ago to dispose of these turbines and consider alternatives. Now, we are in the midst of a request for qualification analysis process, as well as some parallel discussions, potentially with Joint Base Cape Cod, to look at all possible reasonable alternatives, as the board has already outlined and voted some months ago. And this would be going to town meeting with your concurrence and asking that a significant sum of money be set aside for the dismantling of the turbines. No matter what we do, the turbines will need to be dismantled and removed from the existing site. The question becomes what we're able to, what options we're able to consider as far as future locations for the turbines. So, this would be initiate the process of setting aside important and very significant capital funding for the dismantling of the turbines, even as we proceed with the RFQ and other potential location alternatives outside of the town of Falmouth.
Any other questions from the board? Do you have a motion?
I have one, actually. Has there been any interest?
There's been a modest level of interest, which we hope to have further articulation on through the RFQ process, and we've, as I've noted, we're also having some discussions with Joint Base Cape Cod, and that remains going forward in parallel. You're welcome.
Do you have a motion on Article Fourteen?
I'm going to move you add Article Fourteen to the warrant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to reduce the excluded debt FY twenty twenty budget approved by Article Six of the April eighth twenty nineteen annual town meeting. Mr. Suso, can you just speak to this issue for...
Yes, yeah, if you would, Peter, please.
For Peter, yep.
Sure, so this is actually a good follow on our first agenda item. It is, it relates to the fact that the sewer project came in under budget, so the, the state clean water trust that we borrowed the, the money from at zero interest, went ahead when we were at fifty percent of construction and borrowed more than we need. So, good news, we don't have to pay the full amount. They were, they're able to adjust internally, so this is just to reduce our annual payment going forward to the trust.
Great. And will we have numbers, just for, we'll have exact numbers for town meeting? Great.
Will.
Great, thank you.
We add Article Fifteen to the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter One Forty, Section Three of the Code of Falmouth relative to licenses and permits by deleting the words "for not less than a twelve-month period," so the section will read as follows. I think what we'll do is we'll just have the summary of that, yes, please.
So, I think any of the three of us here could, could answer, but there is a change in the general law that makes the, there's, has long been a provision in, in the law that allows for the town to review whether people, folks are delinquent on their taxes before we issue licenses and permits, and they used to have a minimum period of time that you relate on, and that minimum period has been eliminated. So, this gives the town the flexibility to consider delinquency when issuing licenses and permits.
And it doesn't change anything else about the process, just the timeline? Okay, okay. Any other questions? Okay, do you have a motion?
I'm going to move you add Article Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen. Seventeen, Eighteen, both main petition articles.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize a Board of Selectmen to sell or convey a portion of the town's land at Fifty Twin Oaks Drive with the structure thereon. Mr. Suso, or...
Certainly, this is, this is a directive that the board took during a recent discussion at your business meeting, that if approved, would allow the town to essentially issue an RFQ, excuse me, an RFP process for developing a single unit of affordable housing on the town's wellfield site.
What name does that road have?
So, this is...
Is it a core card?
So, Twin Oaks is on the other side, and happens, you know, it's an eighty-eight acre parcel, it's one parcel, eighty-eight acres.
I see.
So, the designation that was, that was given when the town acquired the land was that opposite side, Twin Oaks. But this structure that we've been talking about is really off of Crooked Pond or Williams Hollow.
Which is technically all, a bunch of different numbers on Sam Turner Road, really. Because if you look it up...
Comes off Sam Turner Road, correct.
Yep.
So, this is the Baker property that we've been, we've been, we've talked, and we had a lot of meetings about, just for the public to know, so...
This is the address, would they actually enter from Twin Oaks Drive then, or would they still access from Williams Hollow way?
I think the address of that, of the new parcel to be created would be Williams Hollow.
It'd just be a piece of the larger parcel. It will become a unique parcel.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Great, do you have a motion?
We add Article Nineteen, and petition Article Twenty to the warrant.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article Twenty-One, I will just summarize, this is a petitioner's article, I think we always put them on, but just to note, this is to address sort of the issue of immigration and the town's response to it, and making a statement that the... of immigration and the town's response to it and making a statement that the town become, I don't know that they use the word sanctuary town, but it's sort of along the lines of addressing concerns about immigration.
Can we add Article 21 to the warrant?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 22 is also a petitioner's article. It's addressing single-use plastic bottles.
Can we add Article 22 to the warrant?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 23 is addressing the issue, it's a petitioner's article, but just so the public knows, addressing the issue of utilizing the current senior center, the John DeMello Senior Center, for a facility for the Falmouth Veterans of Foreign Wars. Okay?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to get into the charter review recommendations. So the first is, let me just actually, what I'd like to do, Frank, could you just tell us one more time what our options are with the recommendations that come from Charter Review Committee, in the sense that if all are approved, they, I wouldn't want to bring, I won't speak for you, tell us what our options are with the recommendations.
Frank, Deputy Town Counsel, you appoint the Charter Review Committee and it does its work for a period of time and it brings you recommended changes to the charter. Once it turns them over to you, you bought them, they're yours. You can put them on the warrant if you want, or you can exclude them from the warrant. You can put some on, you can put some off. You can defer them to another town meeting if you want. It's basically your call as to when they go. Now, the process is that the articles that you put on the warrant for the November town meeting, if approved, will be sent to the Attorney General, who has the right to approve them or comment on them. And if they go through that process with affirmative approval, then they will go on the ballot in, at the May election. So because of the way the election and town meetings go, charter articles really should be considered at a November town meeting.
Understood, and then...
Can I ask two questions about that? So if we opted for deferral for some of these articles, could that mean we defer it till next November town meeting, vote them then, and then they would go on to the following year's ballot?
I think so, because if you put them on the April town meeting, it would be 13 months to the next available ballot.
And the other, do we have an option of making edits at this point? Would this be the time, appropriate time we'd make edits before they went on the warrant? If there were changes that you want to make?
You're putting them on the warrant. I mean, it's, it's as suggested by the Charter Review Committee, but you put them on the warrant.
Thank you.
And so just to clarify, I know you sort of spoke to this, Frank, but whatever goes on the warrant needs to be, if it's approved by the AG, needs to be voted on in May. So the only place for deferment is whether or not it goes on the warrant. It's not, we can't defer, you know, just thinking of the logistics of a ballot, because we have a lot, the Charter Review did a lot of work and they give us a lot of recommendations, just sort of logistically thinking about the way a ballot is structured and sort of how it's utilized by voters. If we're concerned about that length, the proper way for the board to address it is to defer putting some of the articles on this warrant.
If that's your concern, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify what our options were.
We have all these articles on the warrant, and 10 of them get passed by town meeting, then what goes to the ballot is one question that covers all those, or is it 10?
No, each, each article becomes its own question on the ballot. So if 10 articles are passed at town meeting, there are 10 questions on the ballot.
In addition to anything else that's on the ballot?
In addition to anything else, that's correct.
Great, any other questions about the process from the board? Okay, thank you. Yep, Judy, you just have to come on up, we've got to give you a microphone. Peter will give you one. Okay. You're welcome, Dr. Clark.
The Charter Review Committee has thought about this issue of numbers and has some preferences, which unfortunately I didn't bring, in five minutes I probably could create the list, but we have, would have some recommendations if you were going to think about deferring some, that we think are less urgent, perhaps.
Do you want to kind of recreate that list while we have a discussion, then we can come back to you, if that's, if that's useful? Dan, did you?
Why, if you take out six, it won't really matter. If you take out, you know, we start with 20, if you bring it down to 17, it doesn't matter. Let it go the way it is. We worked hard on this. We've taken somehow, we had a lot more.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just start by asking, just in terms of, before we go through each of them individually, is there any sort of preference or thought that this board has about that issue, about numbers? I know we talked about it previously, so...
I would, in reading through them, have the question of just how much people could digest in going to a poll and starting to vote on things. I mean, if anybody were going there and hadn't read it ahead of time, they would be really inclined to basically not vote on them, or even vote in the negative, just to be cautious and say, I just want to keep things the way they are. So I think we ought to try to put them into chunks that make sense to people and can be digested by the average voter, who's not necessarily, you know, paying attention to the day-to-day workings of government.
We do have 23 articles in front of us, and that's what concerns me, is the ballot has 23 ballot questions, plus whatever else might come. But the odd thing is that some of them are fairly straightforward, significant, but easy to convince people of. I think some of the language that changes, no one's going to have an issue with, but in my mind, those may not be as important as some of the more substantive ones that would make sense, let get those in. I think that the, as an example of one, the select board one, I bet that's language we're going to start to use, even if we haven't voted it, and isn't going to change substantially what happens in the town. But there are some other ones that really are quite significant, that I would want to put some emphasis on saying, we need to get those passed.
Sue?
And along those lines, and it's such a difficult choice between, you know, legal requirements versus explanations, as Sam mentioned, to, you know, to voters. I mean, it's almost, you know, would be nice to say, you know, this is wordsmithing, this is for, you know, to make continuity in terms versus...
In terms of an explanation.
This is substantive.
But in the ballot, we're not allowed to do that.
Right, so that's what we're, that's why, I'm just saying, you know, in terms of the public, that's why, you know, this is, and I'm sure the committee worked very hard on that issue as well. So that's what makes it, you know, a bit of a quagmire, because we're limited as to what we can do in this official, you know, in the official articles.
Doug?
Well, the explanations will be in the town meeting, you should back on. So I think people are going to have to pay attention to town meeting this year and get the explanation there. And I hope voters will know, if they're at the polls and they're reading something they don't understand, just leave it blank. I don't know if people do that, but I do. If I really, if I get to something on the ballot, I'm really not sure, I leave it blank.
Well, I think the goal would be to really, you know, have it be a ballot that, I know that, you know, Mr. Palmer has said we can do two pages, that it's, it's, it's possible. But I just think about the practicality of, we're always, the challenge is always, you know, to really engage voter turnout, and then once they're there, and they've made the effort to come, to make sure that they understand and, and, you know, engage in that process of making their voice heard. So I do, I am concerned about the length. And again, because we have the option to defer some to the next, it's not as if work has been wasted, it's not as if we're not, you know, considering that these are important recommendations. But it's, you know, I think you get the recommendation, but if it sort of, you know, because of the logistics and the complexity and the number, if it, you know, withers on the vine a bit, I'm not sure if we've lost some of the value of that. So that's just my thought in terms of balancing. Sam?
Yeah, I could suggest a strategy, it's a kind of a kick the can down the road, but could we not come up with a, maybe a partition and present it at town meeting and say, we recommend that you pass these, but that we hold off on the following for subsequent years?
I think that's the deferral, and that's where I'm leaning towards, to find the 12 most important that we do this year and defer the other 11 till next November town meeting, and then push hard for those.
But if we let, if we let town, town meeting participate in that deliberation...
I see.
Then we've essentially given them the option to argue for one versus another, and it's not just us, I'm not going to say arbitrarily setting, but at least using our judgment as to what should be included in any given of May election.
Except that I do think that somewhat of our responsibility is to take the recommendations, try to, you know, make it sort of workable, but I, I think it can certainly be part of the process that town meeting understands, not that we're rejecting those recommendations, but that there's a, you know, deferment, if that's what we do, for the purposes that we've talked about. So to make that very clear as to why, if that's the route that we go, we're doing that.
And the town meeting vote actually is indefinite postponement technically, but they really interpret that as a no vote. Well, actually, what we would be doing is not no-voting these other articles, we would be deferring them. And I don't know if you could, how would you interpret at town meeting if they were voted down? Does that mean you can't, could you bring them back the following year, or would you take that vote as saying, no, we don't like them? And I guess I'd be, I wouldn't know how to interpret that at town meeting vote of, a no vote.
Doug?
I was going to say, if 23 go to town meeting, maybe only 16 go to the ballot. And they might not all be voted, right?
I mean, it's true, it's a possibility.
And then what would we do with those other seven? Would you just say that the Charter Review Committee was wrong and town meeting, or...
That they were wrong, but town meeting doesn't support it, it doesn't go forward, right?
It could be the town meeting also goes through our deliberation, says 23 is too many, not now, and that we just, I'm not sure about that.
I guess I'm just thinking, and I haven't been, and I'll get to you, Dr. Clark, but, you know, I, I wasn't present, sort of paying attention the last time we did this. I don't know how many recommendations were provided the last time. Okay, so, I mean, quite a few less, I mean, that's not a, you know, when you're talking about things of this level of substance, I just, you know, the practicality of town meeting deliberating in a thoughtful substantive way on all the things that are going to be, we have, I think, what, 40? Where are we now? 49?
Forty-nine.
You know, I, I just think if we're able to give some, you know, really give that time and give each of these things their due, that would be my thought. Frank, did you have a comment? And then Dr.?
Yes, just one quick comment. Town meeting cannot vote to put an article on a subsequent town meeting warrant. Only you can do that.
Thank you. That's why we have to make the decision about deferring now, because we, that's not an option at town meeting, okay?
But Frank, it actually is, we put it on the warrant on the town, on the town election. Do we have the option, if it passes at town meeting in November, to defer what ballot we put it on?
No.
No, that's the problem. That's why we defer now.
No, you don't. It's got to be the next, it's got to be the next ballot.
Because to get on the ballot, we have to vote to put on the ballot anyway, even if town meeting voted for it, we...
But it's got to be the next one.
Sue, and then Dr. Clark.
Sure, just one very practical point. When you look at sometimes one article, you can anticipate spending an entire evening on just that discussion. So that's another, but just, just by virtue of, you know, turning the page in different ways, another thought.
Thank you. Peter, did you want to just speak to?
Yes, when, when we looked at the numbers, we feel all of them have merit, but we were kind of guided by the fact that the last Charter Review Committee had 15 articles. They fit, something in the order, you know, it's hard to guess what number will fit on one legal-sized ballot. I think opinion on the committee varies. I think to push the people to grapple with three sides of paper is dangerous, personally. And yet, what is passed can be abbreviated so that it's understandable on the ballot. It doesn't have to be all the language that's on the warrant. Faced with that, we looked at deferring seven articles that we felt had purpose in clarifying the document, but wouldn't change the way town operated. And, and, and there are, so we have those seven that we were kind of prepared to say to you, these would be our picks if you wanted a few. Now, if you're, if you're aiming at cutting it in half, I guess I would like to say that we would like an opportunity to deliberate, because there are, we came to look at these not in terms of 24 separate items, but in terms of four or five issue areas. And there are several that relate to one issue area that are not necessarily in number, sequential number order. So it might be helpful if we could, if you have it, an absolute or an advised number, we could go back and look at which sets of them made most sense to go forward earlier and which later.
I feel the committee has already thought of a 16-7 split. I would certainly be happy, I mean, I was saying 12 of 11 just because as a mathematician, but we're 17-7. I'm very happy to take that, those suggestions from the committee.
I'm the archivist. So of the 15 that were on, that were brought to town meeting, 12 of them passed on the blanket, and three, two were amended, and one was then eventually passed. So it's, it's, I don't think you're looking at people having a discussion about 17 particular articles.
Sam, and then Charlie?
Well, I'm, I'm interested in the fact that you're saying that some of these articles could be clustered together, because there's some synergy between them, okay? And I would like to see them at least arranged that way, so that we can see the connectivity between them. And you're saying currently, the way they're ordered, they're not organized in any such way.
They're ordered, well, at least, I think they're ordered in the, in the article and section and subsection numbers of the charter.
Like sort of, yeah.
That was the intention, rather than the thematic connection between them. And we certainly, we looked at them that way, we could regroup them that way for you. I don't think I can dictate to you how they fit now, but the, I can talk about the major areas, but not the specific numbers.
I think what might be helpful is, Charlie, you had a, you have to come up to the microphone, Charlie, because everyone has to hear at home, please. And then maybe, and I'll hear from you, Sue, and then I'd like to just hear your, your divide of that 16-7.
That's just what I was going to suggest. While we have to have each one as a separate voting, we don't have to put them in, in the order of the charter. We could group them so that people, we would at least make it a little more understandable to the voter. And there may be some graphic way on the ballot you could separate them, even if you're really not. So I think that could help make it, the ballot would still be long, but it would be more understandable if you put related ones.
Sue, and then Doug? Thank you.
It's really the same point that you could, they could be grouped, this is wordsmithing, well, you know, that, that sort of thing, so same point.
But could that actually, Frank, could that be one article? Could all the wordsmithing articles, all the wordsmithing meant changes, could we rewrite that as one article? And say, Article 24, these 10 different paragraphs, they're all just wordsmithing, changing language, not changing anything substantive, and do that as one whole article, which I think, as Judy said, would likely pass in the blanket, would not promote any conversation because we're not changing anything substantive, and just put all of them together, just to get articles down. I mean, it won't make the length of words shorter, but...
Yeah, it probably could be done. We already made some effort to do that. The article number 43, at least on my copy, which I think maybe 44 on yours, has, I think, five subsections, and there's a few others that could be added together. Take a while to do it, and you may not be able to execute the warrant tonight, but...
Doesn't necessarily change, though, the issue of the length of a ballot necessarily? I mean, it, it...
Well, let me just make this comment, this is kind of a general comment, but the length of the ballot is kind of unknown right now, because we actually haven't drafted it, but the language you see on the ballot, excuse me, on the warrant, is a lot more detailed than the language on the ballot. The ballot will be a one- or two-sentence summary, which will challenge me to write it. So if, if, you want those issue areas?
Sure, I think that'd be helpful.
One area of concern was trying to clarify the alignment of planning and decision-making, and there were one, two, three, four, five different articles that relate to that, spread through the area, but a number of them have to do the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, meeting schedules and things. spread through the area, but a number of them have to do the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, meeting schedules and things of that sort. A second issue area was the operation of town commit, yes.
Sorry, could you just, so that it, it helps us with the next stage of that? Do you, can you, do you have a cheat sheet of what those articles, I mean, we've read them, but do you have a cheat sheet of what those article numbers are? So we can kind of jot down?
As, as we've been presented?
Mr. Duffy was referring to a number that doesn't fit my, what I thought was going to be the, the order when I turned in the list. Uh, we moved from the July twenty-one, the July twenty-two report that had numbers on it, to, um, shrinking the list, to assigning article numbers.
So you don't have the list that's in our pack yet, is what you're saying? Okay, okay.
I don't know whether I do or not, because I have not seen, um, and, and, um, so I can tell you.
It's okay.
Again, if you, if you want to go on to other things, I probably could go to my notebook here and get you the actual numbers if I got that list, so.
That's okay. I think if you just keep going with your, your thematic grouping and we can go from there.
So there were, there were, there were five area, five different recommendations to you that had to do with that, um, effort to get consistency of planning and, and communication across plans. There were two, four, six, seven different recommendations to you that had to do with committee functionings. Some of them, um, might fall into the areas that we thought could be deferred, but they all were focused on trying to clarify the way committees operate, including such things as, um, the change that made the chairman of a committee the person in charge of deciding on excused absences and taking that to the committee for a vote. Well, do you have to have that for next year or could that be deferred? That's one of those issue areas. One of those is the, is, I think, a symbolic one. It is what on my warrant was Article twenty-four, five, I guess, which puts committees into the form of government. It was C-one, um, three. And, and that is not, that's a symbolic thing. I, others are much more operational, that's symbolic, and certainly it could be deferred from that group. The third area was, um, issues of the working of the Board of Selectmen and town meeting. There was an article that, that moved the finance committee definition. I think it was, um, I, I don't know your article numbers.
Our Article thirty.
Yeah. And, and organized that information because it was an issue about a separation between the quote legislative branch and the executive branch of, of the town government. And there were a couple of others like that. There were two that were around gender neutrality. The select board and the watcher of the warrant are too focused on that issue. And then there were a number on clarity of terminology, and we've already unified, um, four of those in one article, which I, at least on my list, was words and phrases. It was the first one of our articles that may have been moved to the end. I don't know where it is.
Article twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, that would be the first on our list. And then there were a few that were just accuracy of information. Had to do with the town meeting size by state law, not by law, um, and things of that sort that, that are accuracy issues, and they might be grouped as simply providing, providing a more accurate statement of how things are done. I think the Falmouth Housing Authority membership, um, based on state law rather than on the secretary in the, in the state government appointing that person. So there, there are things like that that clean up those, those things. And there were four of those.
Great, thank you. Sue?
So with the time that we have, would it make sense for the board to ask staff to organize in that manner so that we can then review whether to, to narrow the articles or not?
I'm just looking at our timeline, because our timeline is pretty tight, because the articles have to be published on Friday, the twentieth, which is this Friday. So I think what I would suggest is that we, um, we go through the articles and we determine whether or not sort of substantively we approve of them. And then we can address the larger issue as to whether or not we're going to defer any. So we will know whether or not this board approves these articles sort of as written, and then we can speak to the numbers issue that we've already, I think, got a lot of good input on in terms of logistics and process. Does that sound fair to the board?
Do we have a choice?
Okay, all right. Article twenty-four, which is really that word, that terminology, it's to address the issue, changing the word master plan to a local comprehensive plan, and changing the terminology long-range plan to strategic plan, so that there's a, there's really a continuity across the charter of that, that language that is more appropriately in line with the actual terms that planning uses and the Board of Selectmen use.
That's one of the words that I think.
Yeah, it's Article twenty-four. Does anybody have any objection to that? That seems to me to be one of those. Not from our list that we have here. Our charter reviews.
That's the first one.
Is twenty-four.
And I guess I go back to, why can't that and the language changes of he and hers and all the ones that are just cleaning up language, why couldn't we put them together as one article?
That's what I'm saying.
What's Frank saying?
Frank's going to work on it.
I mean, I guess I'm just saying it's.
It's a timing issue. Can we do it with our calendar?
Right, the, so the issue is that we need to know what articles are placed on the warrant tonight.
I know. What I'm saying, I, I guess I would move the Article twenty-four and Article twenty-five, Article twenty-six, uh, Article twenty-nine, and where was the one about the board, select board? We just made that one article and the language would risk being, see if the town will vote to adopt the following proposed amendments relative certain reasons. And then it's the, that would be subcategory one. Subcategory two would be Article twenty-five. Subcategory three would be Article twenty-six. And there's no language change.
I would second that.
And then Article thirty-one was the.
Thirty-one is the select.
And what was the other one?
Twenty-nine, you said watcher of the warrant?
So the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty-one would all be one article. Twenty-four, twenty-nine.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-nine.
And thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
And that would be one, and it, I don't think they're substantive and maybe town meeting says, you know, we don't want to deal with that right now. Deferred or something, but.
But we are the ones that have to defer it. I mean, that's, I think.
But I think that would pass in the blanket anyway.
Yes.
I agree.
Right, and those are probably fairly easy to explain on a ballot.
I second that.
So I just want to ask Frank, does that make sense that those can be merged together as, you're not changing any language, you're just consolidating them to a single article that addresses, um.
I think it probably can be done. It would, we'll have to do it tomorrow morning.
Can I ask Mr. Jones, what would be the value, um, of that versus just grouping them sort of numerically, as they almost already are, but, so that they're all, five of those articles are in order? Again, it does, so that town meeting just votes each one of them? If we're going to put them on and address it?
Do they then have to be separate articles on the town ballot?
Yeah, that's what you say.
The ballot and the warrant have to line up with, yes.
That would be one reason, is just to have it only be one valid question when they are, really are in many ways.
I see what you're saying.
Attacking the same topic, just cleaning up the language without doing anything substantive.
You guys could swing that, can't you?
Frank's making.
Before, Matty.
I think it can be done. I'm just not prepared to sit here and do it while.
No, no, I don't think there's no need, we're, we're not asking for any change, you're just, we're just consolidating those numbers. So let's get that list, let's just get a clean copy. Are you keeping a copy, Peter? So, okay, great. So that's a motion and a second for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-one to be consolidated and to be placed on the, uh, warrant as a single article. As Article twenty-four. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that brings us to our page six and twenty-seven.
Article twenty-seven, Article twenty-five.
Right. And this is to, uh, this is really another one of those lining up state law issues, so. Article twenty-seven would be then Article twenty-five? I think the only other one is the one with the housing, right? So I don't know that it's a, a good lineup. Just looking to see.
The only thing is whether Article twenty-eight, which is also talking about town meeting, one is talking about the definition and then talking about, the other one's talking about the meetings that occur.
I feel like there could be maybe more discussion on, the problem with consolidating too much is that if town meeting doesn't like part of it, then it's sort of, now someone's going to amend it on the floor and cut it apart, so. Um, so we have a motion to make Article twenty-seven, Article twenty-five, and to place it on the warrant. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Article twenty-eight, as, uh, Selectman Jones is pointing out, is to say that town meetings shall be held twice annually in the spring on a date in April, and in the fall on a date, uh, excuse me, uh, date to be fixed by the Board of Selectmen in the fall.
No, it'd become Article twenty-six.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy, would it, does that, I can't remember what the charter says about special town meetings. Are those not listed as part of this article? Does that root us from having a special town meeting if it says it can only happen twice?
Well, the charter as it exists right now says you have two annual town meetings. One, the first Monday of April, and the other one, uh, at a date to be selected in November, or in the fall, I believe, in the fall. You can have a special town meeting under state law anytime you get a petition of two hundred people requiring it or the Board of Selectmen calls one. It's, I think this article only addresses the issue of the annual town meetings. It doesn't account for the fact that you're going to have special town meetings every time you want one.
I would feel that if we were going to get rid of an article, that this could be one, we could say. It's been working pretty well, the dates we have right now, and if we wanted to come back and defer this one, this would be one that I think we could defer, um, depending on how our numbers come up later.
Okay, so do you want to, well, let's hold Article twenty-eight? For now, and we'll return to it tonight.
Right, but we just don't know the numbers, that's all. Right now it's twenty-six.
Yes, right now it's twenty-six. We've already done twenty-nine. All right, Article thirty is to address, uh, the issue of the finance committee, um, and.
Hold Article thirty, the new Article twenty-six. I just think to clarify the difference between the finance committee and, as Mr., as Dr. Clark was saying, and the executive, just defining where they really fall, I think is a crucial one to do.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's our new, well, twenty-six. All right, we've already done thirty-one. Okay, Article thirty-two, this is to see if the town will vote to adopt the following amendment. Uh, "The board shall, before the start of each calendar year, publish a schedule of public meetings with such other governmental bodies as it deems necessary, and shall hold them jointly for the consideration of the town's master plan." I think that still has to be long, that's supposed to be LCP there, correct?
Yes, we need to change terms that were.
I understand, okay. Okay, and other planning and policy initiatives, what do folks think about?
This is the only one that I just, I'm not sure we, I didn't feel essential that this was a part of our charter to direct, I mean, it's because it's telling me what to do, or telling the board what to do. But to have that kind of little detail in a charter, I thought seemed a little bit minutia compared to the big, major topics there. So that's one, as opposed to deferring, I didn't feel is necessary at all. I mean, I agree with the concept, I just wouldn't see it as being a charter issue.
We debated this at some length and felt that it was a valuable, uh, notion to get into the charter because it honors the importance of advanced scheduled joint meetings, as you think through your year. And it honors the work you've been doing to try to increase the effectiveness of that process through your own efforts to have, hold joint meetings. So it was an effort on our part to try to build into the charter, um, a motivation to continue to do that.
And, and I, you know, I, my concern is just, I guess, you know, when something becomes part of the charter, then it clearly needs to be adhered to. And whenever I start to think about sort of scheduling meetings, um, you know, routinely, you know, we try to do that in advance, but then you're juggling different boards and committees' schedules. And so I guess I just wonder logistically, you know, if it's not, if it's not a possibility, because there, sometimes meetings are moving targets and we do set them up, and we have been obviously holding them, we've been having committees come to us. There's an effort to have a committee calendar to try and give that, those committees an idea of when they're coming before the board. But I just wonder if we set up any possibility of problems when we get to that, that level of minutia. Is that, that's my concern, but.
I think it's a nice goal. As we were creating the committee handbook, we were looking at other towns and.
Well, I think we can meet with our committees. I guess my issue would be, um, I mean, at the beginning of the year, you're never sure how many meetings. I guess I don't, what I don't understand is, is, and maybe you can speak to this, and then Charlie, I see you're there, here in the race. Are you, is this recommendation asking for the board to have all of our meetings for a twelve-month period listed? Or for just our joint meetings with, say, planning or affirmative action committee? What is the?
This, this article doesn't mandate that you set every meeting a year ahead of time, no. It, it was designed that you look ahead at your most significant decisions and set those dates, um, with those critical committees. But it certainly doesn't expect that you're not going to hold a joint meeting when some emergency requires one. And it is not to require that you can't have meetings when you want them and need them. It is to ask you to work with other committees to set the most critical meetings jointly ahead of time and publish those.
Madam Chair, could I just ask a follow-up question on that?
Then, then Charles, yeah.
So just, again, to, um, make sure we all understand the intent the same way. The, the sentence reads, well, I'll read the whole paragraph. "The board shall, before the start of each calendar year, publish a schedule of public meetings with such other government bodies as it deems necessary." The discussion to this point has been assuming that that's all of the joint meetings. But as you, as we read on, "and shall hold," comma, "and shall hold them jointly," comma, "for the consideration of the town's master plan and other planning and policy initiatives." So was the intent here just about the long-range comprehensive plan? Or only land-use planning or all joint meetings?
It's important to recognize that what this replaces, that's already in the charter, is that you're required to hold two joint meetings with the planning board. That was thought to be too narrow. So it just, it's mainly to open that up, and it is limited. But it says others, but the focus was on planning functions, the physical, economic, environmental development of the town, as expressed in planning documents.
So I guess, so, thank you, because that, that clarifies. I mean, I guess I would rather see language that says, "The board shall, um, at the beginning of each calendar year, publish a schedule of at least two joint meetings with planning." I mean, I guess this to me, when I read it, I mean, it's taken a bit more of explanation, and I guess this is just the, the worrying lawyer in me. I see this as not being clear enough, that I understand who the charter is, or what the charter is requiring by this. So if the goal is to, um, you know, either, if the goal is to. So if the goal is to, um, you know, either, if the goal is to expand the number of times that we meet with Planning, then I think that's one thing. If we're singling up Planning. If the goal is to try and generate some advanced, um, you know, sort of calendaring, then I guess that's another sort of objective. I guess I'm just wondering what the objective is.
Well, the objective is not to limit it to Planning, but to the master plan or the local comprehensive plan, which involves many agencies of town. So that if you, to look at it more broadly, so with the focus on the master plan, as it's called now, and your strategic plan, have meetings with the relevant agencies, which would always include Planning probably, but with the other entities. Conservation is clearly involved in those things in other books.
Just as a, maybe an edit that I'd like to suggest, just trying to have, to schedule these meetings has been a, or publishing a schedule is what troubles me, is trying to do it for a calendar year. And maybe it covers the same thing, to say, "The board shall cross out before the start of each calendar year, cross out 'publish,' A, and say, 'The board shall schedule public meetings with such a governmental bodies it deems necessary for this purpose.'" It's just telling us that we should do that every year. Because before the end of the calendar year, to sk- publish a schedule, I think that just logistically is so problematic. But I don't mind the, the charter saying, but you need to do it.
And then, sorry, but you would also, if, if the, if this is replacing the language about the two meetings with Planning, then you would probably also need something that says, "This shall include no less than two meetings, two joint meetings." Are you saying you just leave that out because it's...
I would leave that because we're going to have to, it has to.
Let me point out that that language is in the charter in another location.
Okay, so this wouldn't eradicate it altogether?
It doesn't eradicate that.
Okay, thank you, that's nice.
That's at C four sixty-two. It's, it's, uh, your current, um... I'm sorry. C, C four sixty. So it, it is your, your current, uh, number thirty-eight, I believe. And what it did...
Yes, it does.
What it did was to refer back to this article to say that you would hold that, meetings with them as planned in this scheduling, and at least twice a year.
I want to support, uh, Mr. Jones's suggestion, because I think the other thing that this does, you know, we, we were looking at community development and how much of a challenge that is in terms of coordinating a lot of, of committees and, and departments. And I think this suggestion really does a, a good job in, in, you know, trying to make things less reactive. I mean, there, we're so busy and there are so many issues and, and so much going on at the same time, that the joint meetings that we've had have often been issue-driven. What is, what's at, at the moment, what do we need to figure out, what's important? So I really appreciate the committee's suggestion that if we look at it non-reactively, and we look at it as, as more of a, a strategic and, and planning endeavor, where we have a goal, you know, of, and it's, you know, might, it might only be two meetings. I like, again, I like Mr. Jones's suggestion. It just puts the board and staff and, and committees in the town in more of a, um, planning...
A proactive, collaborative.
Exactly, right.
So can you just say what you were suggesting again?
Hold article thirty-two, become article twenty-seven. And I would strike the language, "Before the start of each calendar year," strike, publish, A, and of. So it would read, "The board shall schedule public meetings with such other governmental bodies as it deems necessary, and shall hold them jointly for the consideration of the town's master plan and other planning and policy initiatives."
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty-three. Um, this is appointing governmental bodies, uh, listed in article seven, um, of the charter, and the board shall have the power to appoint governmental bodies and define and set their duties. This was, um, can you just speak to this, Dr. Clark, what the impetus behind this was? Was this the piece that just clarifies?
Yes, this is clarification language also. There were, in the old charter language, duplicative. B and C were duplicative, and so they've been specified here that B refers to governmental bodies that are already listed in the charter. Because you don't have full authority over their scope of activities. Some of their scope of activities is set by state law and other, and other activities. And C is then set specifically about those advisory boards that, for which you are responsible for setting the scope and setting the numbers and setting the length of service and setting those kinds of things.
Great. Do we have a motion on this particular article? Any thoughts on this?
Um, just a quick question. So does it make any sense to join them with another article or not? Is there anything else of that help, clarification, or not...
The only one I would, the only other one I would see is the one that we've talked about previously, and we'll get to that, but the, the piece about, and it's not in here, because, so I guess, no, it doesn't matter. I was thinking about the committees, when we talked about doing a bylaw, and then Frank.
Well, I think that still is in, up for discussion, right?
Okay, so I guess the only place that I would, only thing I might see it connecting with, just because it's talking about committees and a appointment, would be, um, that is article...
That's, uh, your current forty-four, I think.
Yes. I don't know that, 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 that's, it's an exact match, but if we're talking about trying to consolidate, I don't know that it goes into one article. Maybe it's close to each other, but...
I think that's twenty-eight.
Thirty-three is twenty-eight?
No, forty-five is twenty-eight.
We still have to do thirty-three. Thirty-three is twenty-eight, and maybe forty-five might be twenty-nine. So, uh, we have to vote on, on the old article thirty-three. Do I have any other further questions or concerns about it? Does everybody understand what it's asking? Is it something that we think we defer? Does it go in our list of defer to go back to tonight?
I guess that's where I'm leaning, and partly because I'm not sure I really understand what it's, what it's doing.
Okay, so do you want to, let's hold that for now? No, don't be sorry, we'll go back.
There's a cycle, right.
But it's really, it doesn't change anything, it's just clarifying. So if we're thinking about deferring a few things, that might be one to, let's hold and maybe go back to if the board is okay with that?
If I may say to the board, that's one of the ones that we felt could be held.
Totally defer, okay. Um, article thirty-four. This is, "The board shall have the thor- a power and authority after public hearing and publication to adopt rules and regulations for conducting town business." Is this another clarification from this? No. What, can you explain this to us, Frank or Peter? What this replaces or changes?
It doesn't really replace anything, but there are certain, uh, areas where the town, or the Board of Selectmen is clearly authorized to promulgate rules and regulations. For example, on taxicabs, um, shellfish, uh, and there are a number of other rules and regu- regulations that you will promulgate it. But in other respects, it's kind of vague and the authority should be clarified. Now, a couple of years ago, we went through issues about conduct of beaches. Um, this would give the Board of Selectmen the, the authority to promulgate rules and regulations with respect to any town property and conduct and activity on town property, where previously that authority was kind of iffy.
Great, thank you.
I think this is going to be one that's going to really slow town meeting down, and, which may be the right thing to do, but I, I, maybe it's going to leave it up to town meeting then, but...
I would say it would be good to leave us at town.
Okay.
Article thirty-four would be article twenty-eight.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, article thirty-five, the old article thirty-five. "To see if the town will vote to adopt the following proposed amendments," okay? And this is, um... What does this change? Sorry, we've looked at so many of these.
My comment, this moves language about the moderator around, and it simply unifies language that exists. It is not as urgent as, or crucial as some of the other.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you say recommend it?
Let's hold it for now.
Okay, great, we're going to hold it. We did article thirty, no, okay, article thirty-six. Okay, so this is another, um, one of the places where I had some concern with some language. So this is, "The board shall make recommendations, as it deems necessary, on all matters concerning the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town to the Board of Selectmen," meaning the, um, Planning Board, shall do that. "And to the parties directly involved, through the town planner, who acts at, as the board's administrator. At the request of the Planning Board, any town agency dealing with significant public improvements relating to the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town shall report to the status of such plans or developments to the Planning Board, so as to be evaluated for consistency with the LCP." Um, I'm going to tell you that I have a, I have a hard time with this article, most specifically for the word "significant," because I think it's a really objective term, and, um, you know, I don't know what significant, there's not, you know, there's no sort of parameters for what significant means. And to me, it's another place where I see a potential pitfall. Who determines what significant? Does significant, Frank, in municipal governance have a, a ter- is it a term of art that I'm not aware of?
No, I think you'd go to the dictionary to look it up.
Right, which just means important and meaningful.
Is the, "At the request of the Planning Board," is it, this article's put in there at the request, or after the request of the Planning Board? Then the town agency has to do it?
The, ask the question again, please, Mr. Jones?
No, it says, "At the request of the Planning Board."
Yes.
Any town, so, the town agency doesn't do this until the Planning Board's asked them to.
That's correct. It's the Planning Board's...
The Planning Board would initiate it.
Sense of the initiatives, and, and has the ability to initiate that request. Charlie, do you want to?
The Planning Board that would determine significance, but they would have to make a determination that it's significant. They requ- at their request, they don't...
So I guess if I can just run a scenario, so say we're doing, uh, the wastewater. You know, we're, we're going to expand Site fourteen. And Planning says, "This is a significant project." And the Board of Selectmen, we present our proposal to the Planning Board, and does the Planning Board have the authority to vote it up or down? How does that process work?
Well, it, it doesn't include any authority to make a decision on it. It just says they need to be, because, so that they can evaluate and make a comment, but the comment is a comment.
Okay.
They don't have any existing authority to influence any decisions other than what they specifically have authority for, such as site plan, planning, especially that doesn't change. But it, it gives them the ability to express a view. How does this fit into the comprehensive plan?
They always have that ability.
No, they don't.
Expressive point of view, I'm sure they do.
But they don't necessarily know, they, they don't have the ability to ask the agency proposing it to explain it, so that they can more fully evaluate it. There's no...
They're not going to be able to make a recommendation.
Not, pardon?
They, they have no authority, so they can't make any decision about it. I just, I think it'd be asking them for something and giving them no teeth to it, so I think that would be problematic also.
But it's certainly worthwhile hearing their opinion. And there's no vehicle that assures they get a chance to make an opinion on something over which they do not have authority.
Right, I, I would rather think the town agency, if they felt the Planning Board had worthwhile input, would ask them.
But the, the other agencies generally do not know what's in the comprehensive plan. I mean, that'd be realistic. There are not many people who read the comprehensive plan, and yet it's a very important document.
Then we need to change that. Then we need to change that.
Right, in terms of the way we run, but I think there's, there's a missing piece here, and that's the town administrator, who is familiar in this. I, you know, I not only have a problem with significance, does it mean lots of money? Does it mean something that's people generally think is important, or a couple people think is just generally important? But I, but I think this is, you know, kind of a, a real sea change to the, the, you know, the authority of the town manager, who really, you know, should be working and aware of, you know, the, the Planning Board's questions, and should, you know, should then with, with the Board of Selectmen, kind of work on getting those answers together. That's just the other piece that I see kind of missing here. You know, where's, where is, so now you would have the Planning Board asking an agency, um, and, and for an answer to questions or, or, um, a report, that the town manager, I, I don't see him in this loop.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could sort of amplify those comments a bit, I, you know, I understand the intent here is to have more cohesion in, in the planning process. But I, I think it, I, I, I think it does represent a real change in the scope of the authority of the Planning Board. Because right now, as I understand it, the Planning Board is a, is a planning ag- they have, they have a couple of roles, right? They, they have a role in planning in the sense of developing, with a lot of input from the community, the local comprehensive plan, and developing zoning bylaw changes that, again, have a lot of input, but they're creating new policy. And there are very distinct areas where there are permitting authority. But this would now give them a role in operations. You know, it, it gets into the operations and, and the, and the, the role of the town manager in preparing the capital plan, uh, and the budget. So it, 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 it's only to talk about it, it's only to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, but it is an expansion of the scope of the Planning Board.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, thank you for that point. I guess that's, you know, aside from the word "significant," which I guess you could, you could put some parameters in there. Any town agency, so that's going to mean any town department, any town committee. So we're going to have our department heads, uh, reporting to Planning, rather than speaking to our town planner about a potential pro- I mean, I just don't see, and then if there's further conversation needed, I mean, our town planner obviously works in concert with our Planning Board, and they're closely, you know, they're, they're communicating on a regular basis. I guess I just don't understand if the role is to have more communication with this, which this board embraces, and I think has tried very hard to promote over the last, you know, few years with a lot of, um, joint meetings, some joint meetings that have never happened before, we're trying to bring in more organizations. I'd rather, excuse me, more, uh, committees and boards. I'd rather see something that directly speaks to the fact that we, you know, want to sort of promote that, or promote a, a review or a look at the LCP as we think of projects. And I would say that I think, I mean, I, I get your point. Most people aren't reading the LCP. But I would say that I think a lot of people on pretty significant boards generally have a good sense of it, and if they don't, they know enough to kind of, you know, get that information. So I gu- I, I guess I, I have a couple, I think the practical logistical piece of it, and then that, I just can't get past that word "significant," but that...
I just, I just would...
Oh, sorry, Dr. Clark.
Charlie, Charlie, one second, I'll give this to you so everybody can hear. But I, I think the intention here is to increase that communication, to make this a two-way street, so that it isn't a function of the Planning Board creating the LCP, and then sometimes not knowing whether other people understand it as they do their planning. It opens up an opportunity for them to ask for people to come talk with them. We don't see this as undermining anybody's authority. We don't assume that the town planner isn't talking to the town manager, or the town planner, ju- planner not talking to the Planning Board. If I were a department head and the, and the Planning Board asked me to come and speak with them about something, I wouldn't go there without talking to the town manager about it. I don't, I don't think that has to be written in here to ensure that that happens.
Of course, Selectmen is not even, we're not allowed to ask a department head to come and talk to us. We actually don't communicate with them directly, certainly not as individuals, but it's always through the town manager also.
Right, so I do think it's a, I do think it's a change in, in the way, um, you know, we don't call departments before us. We don't call other boards before us. I mean, we, you know, we ask for committees to make reports, but we don't, if we meet with Planning, it's for a joint meeting. We don't sort of ask Planning, at least in my experience, we've never requested Planning to come before us to, um, you know, explain or get sort of a blessing for anything that they're going to... they're gonna propose. I don't think that, so I guess, I would rather see something that speaks to that collaboration and to highlighting sort of the LCP and the importance of that without creating a bit of confusion about how things operate, but, Charlie?
There is another article that is closer to what you said, Peter, on the capital plan.
Article forty-six.
Forty-six, where it's the town manager doing the capital plan, you would look at it, there's a list of things that go in the capital plan, you know, how much does it cost, what does it do, that there would be an assessment of its consistency with the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. But that would be what
But I guess why would, if we're, so, wouldn't one way, let me just look at this one before we go to, but in looking at this article, wouldn't it be more helpful to say that boards making recommendations on all matters concerning physical, economic, and environmental development of the town shall, I'm just, I'm not saying the exact words, but shall take into consideration the LCP and the strategic plan, or whatever you want, so that we're putting the onus and the weight on those committees and boards to do what the plan, what planning is concerned, which is that they haven't read and aren't aware of this, but we're not creating a new sort of reporting mechanism that, you know, we haven't really done before, and I don't know it's too
I think the point you're making actually covers Article forty-six, is that no town agency can move forward on a capital plan without meeting with our finance director, without meeting with our town manager, getting approval to make sure that these things do fit within the local plan. So I think they're already doing, they would have to do that with Article forty-six. So I would just move on and say, I would not recommend putting Article forty-six on, but I would put Article thirty-seven on as Article, I think we're now at twenty-nine.
Okay, any other comment from this board?
Yeah, I think too that thirty-six is a little overboard, it's going too far, and it's uncharted territory. I don't think we're quite ready. I think that we could use some language that would direct better communication. I know that this is sort of a supplement to the fact that we don't have a community development director position in place, and we're trying to create more coordination and communication, but I think this puts a new burden on the planning board that I don't think they're quite ready for.
Is that a second?
Yes, it is a second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So you're moving to Article thirty-seven, the old Article thirty-seven, right? Would be Article twenty-nine. Planning board shall recommend proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw and shall provide detailed written explanation of its recommendations and the extent to which such recommendations are consistent with the LCP. Any, seems pretty
Move that to go ahead as Article twenty-nine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following proposed amendment, the planning board, sorry, by amending section so that it reads, "The planning board, meet with the Board of Selectmen as scheduled under C three, three B, or at least twice a year." Because it's referring back to something that we've
Yeah, so you, that goes off.
Yep. Okay.
So we have to take a vote on that.
All those in favor of removing that?
Motion, I'll move that.
Sorry, second. All those in favor?
Thirty-eight.
Aye. Okay. Thirty.
So thirty-eight's gone.
That's thirty-eight.
So I move Article thirty-nine, become our new thirty.
Okay. All those in favor, this is the issue that Dr. Clark was talking about, lining up the language with the state law.
For the housing authority.
For the housing authority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article forty.
Is this one that, it sort of feels a little bit similar to Article, I don't know, hell, Article thirty-three, about the governmental bodies?
This article is the one
This article is linked to a couple of other articles that come after it, because it attempts to define those committees, those governmental bodies, which should be named in the charter and those do not have to be named in the charter. And the basic critical difference, we've, we've worded two criteria, both of which have to be met. The essential issue is that in both cases, there's an authority, an activity, that isn't directly under, some of it at least, under the, under the Board of Selectmen. Whereas those committees that don't meet these two criteria are the advisory boards that answer to you and don't have independent decision-making beyond you. So this, this attempts to set up that definition, there has not been one in the charter. When we were asked by certain committees, can we be put into the charter, we were confronted with, well, why should that group get in and this one not get in? Why is the wastewater management not in, and some other, so we tried to find a definition that would clarify that line. So this sets the definition, and associated with it, you have to move to
Two, forty-three, forty-four.
Yes, not all of those, I think, but particularly the ones that, that, C seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, that, that take out four committees, and C sixteen and seventeen, which put in two committees that meet the criteria.
Considering then combining forty, forty-four, and forty-five into one article?
I think there are gonna be significant discussions about pieces of this unless, I don't know, I'm suspecting that this would be the source of some discussion.
But I think they'd all be the same topic, wouldn't they? And so having that discussion collectively might be better than having three different conversations that are attacking the same topic.
Except that it may all go down because of a problem somebody has with a part of it.
So let's just take a look at them, so forty sets the criteria, okay? And forty
Five.
Forty-four names the committees.
Affected.
Affected.
That don't, that don't meet the criteria.
That don't meet, that currently are in the charter, that don't meet the criteria, that are sort of arbitrarily, I don't wanna say arbitrarily, but they've been in the charter and it, there's no rhyme or reason to why some are and some aren't, and that's what you're trying to clarify.
There's no, yes, there's no reason why they should be in and not
Yes, some other of these other
Some of the twenty other advisory committees that you have.
Exactly. And then forty-five
Adds two.
Adds two.
That should be there.
That should be that, that criteria.
Because they are state authorized and they exercise some authority outside of your control.
So I would suggest, I mean, maybe forty, well, I don't know, I think we should leave them separate. If the charter put them separate, the review committee put them separate, I do agree with Sam that I think the debate is gonna be a little bit, if we get over the hump of that first one, maybe the debate isn't as much on the others, but
I would combine them.
Come up, Judy. Judy.
So much territorial.
So when we presented initially to you, there was a statement made, I think it might have been Megan, among others, that my concern was that these four committees cease to exist if they're not in the charter and they're not named in the bylaw for their terms in existence. And so there was discussion of putting bylaws, bylaw change in as articles.
And we can speak to that. Frank, do you wanna, or Peter, do you wanna just address where that?
And specifically to have those, those articles precede this, to diffuse the discussion on people who are concerned about the disappearance without them being a new parking space.
Frank, do you wanna just, can you address that? I know that you, we've talked about this as early as today, Frank, is
We did, and the, I don't know what number the article is, 'cause I don't have the same number you do, but the, the article that takes out four committees, it's been suggested that there be a bylaw presented to Town Meeting creating these four committees, so that they don't seem to fall off a cliff somewhere. Well, that actually is not going to happen. They exist already, and I think the most important provision in the charter is the provision with respect to appointed town boards that authorizes the Board of Selectmen to appoint them, to set the terms of their duties, to define their responsibilities and the limits of their existence. And these committees already have been created, the fact that they won't be admitted, won't be mentioned in the charter will have no effect on them, they will not go out of existence, and a bylaw, in my opinion, is not necessary, because if there's any question, the Board of Selectmen can simply vote to reconstitute them.
Go ahead, Sue.
I have a problem with that, because then it's dependent upon the, you know, the makeup of the board versus, you know, it's quite different having a bylaw for the, really set up more standing committees, so that, that would be a problem I would have with that.
But then, let me just ask, there aren't bylaws for all the other committees, right?
No, there are not.
So we get back to some of that same hierarchy, or, I don't even, I mean, I think it's just an incomplete process if some committees, every, all of those committees that are advisory are sort of a creature of the creation of a board, of Selectmen at some point in time, and they exist until the board dissolves it, which I don't know when that has happened, other than maybe, did we ever get rid of?
Well, some of them were actually created by Town Meeting years ago, and they still remain in existence. And I think what the charter tried to do was to corral all of the committees, that are advisory anyways, and bring them under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and let the Board of Selectmen by its votes create them and set the limits of their responsibilities and define their, their terms and powers and so forth. There, there really are no bylaws that I'm aware of that create these various committees.
Dr. Clark?
I would comment that we scratched our heads about why those boards were there, and the best we can reconstruct is that they were, they were major committees before the charter was formed. In the prior form of government, these were significant, historically significant, and very energetic, and exercised some authority. The charter came along and changed that organizationally and legally, although how much it changed their behavior is another issue. And, and so I think that you have a long history that's going to be a point of a lot of discussion. And personally, as chairman of the committee, I would say, if you don't wanna lose all three of these, you ought to, if anything, pair the definition with the two that you're adding, CPC and EDIC, and leave the other one separate, and have that a separate argument. And if, if Town Meeting wants to leave them there, then they exist in the charter as an exception to the definition, but you have the definition for future decisions, and you may lose that if you bunch them all together personally.
Can we add Article forty and forty-five as Article thirty-one, and combine forty and forty-five?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, that's helpful. All right, Article forty-one, the old Article forty-one, this is about unexcused absences and the fact that Okay? Article forty, I'm sorry, is everybody okay with putting it on hold for now? Coming back to it, once we count everything up? Okay, Article forty-two.
I guess I can't remember what C seven dash three is.
That is
The change of the composition of the appointed town boards.
See?
Peter, Frank, or Dr. Clark?
What is currently forty-two, again, you've changed my numbers, so it, it is seven-three, C seven-three. And the issue here is that the Board of Selectmen, this is under C seven, which is appointed boards. The charter gives you the authority to set the size of those appointed committees, those appointed governmental bodies. And yet you have some language that exists here that says the Town Meeting can set the size of those governmental bodies. So there is a potential conflict that I don't think has ever arisen, and the only, in my history here, I think the Town Meeting voted to change the size of the school committee, which is not C seven, it's not an appointed committee, it's under elected committees. So whether Town Meeting has the power to change elected committees is maybe a moot point, but what this says is they don't have the power any longer, or shouldn't have the power in conflict with you to set the size of appointed advisory committees.
People feel like that's something we could potentially hold if we're looking at numbers, since it's, I think, an important clarification, but in practice, maybe not a problem.
Right.
Okay, so we'll just hold that for now? Okay, this is the Board of Assessors, three members shall be appointed whose appointment shall be exempt from the provisions, okay? Okay. Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Article forty-four, this is the standalone that we were just talking about, that addresses
Well, I guess it would make sense to put this
Put it with it, after, right?
I guess I would make the article, this Article forty-four, Article thirty-two, and make the previous Article thirty-two, thirty-three.
Yep. Do you have that, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're at thirty, the old forty-five, right? Excuse me.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Okay, this goes back to what we just talked about, which is saying the town manager shall prepare a five-year capital improvement plan, which shall include a clear summary of its contents, a list of all capital improvements proposed to be undertaken during the next five-year fiscal, supporting data, cost estimate, methods of financing, recommended time schedule, the estimated annual cost of operating and maintaining the facilities or equipment to be constructed or acquired, and an analysis of the consistency of each capital improvement project that is a significant public improvement related to the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town with the LCP and long-range plan, which would be the strategic plan. Mr. Suso, do you wanna speak to, to this process, what you're currently, what the current practice is and how this might
Happy to. Yeah, currently, we have a, we generate and bring to the Board a ten-year capital plan, and have been doing that for a number of years. The lion's share of the items in that plan are really things that would not relate at all to this article, however, the concern about what is, what does someone deem significant or not significant creates a potential for conflict and confrontation and disagreement with what is or is not related to the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town. And I believe it essentially establishes some potential traps here that could result in alleged charter violations for no good reason.
So can you tell us, when you put together, I know obviously it's not five, it's ten, the process for that is obviously garnering a lot of information from department heads, because they're the frontline individuals for some of those, you know, for some of that information, and then our finance director, I mean, how does that process work? Are we already, in other words, how is the Selectmen's five-year strategic plan and the LCP part of that, the current process? How do those two guiding sort of documents or, or policy suggestions, how do they come into the capital?
Well, those, those plans are routinely brought to the awareness of, of department heads who bring in the capital plan proposals, and any that are received that are not aware of those or are not cognizant of those are adjusted as part of the process automatically. They are assembled after they're submitted to the finance director, and we have an internal review of those. Our current process is I sit with the finance director and assistant town manager, and we bring in department heads as needed to clarify the proposals that they're making, and ensure frankly that they are consistent with the local comprehensive plan, and in my judgment, also very importantly, the Selectmen's five-year strategic plan, which each year is updated as a matter of routine, and is provided to the departments upon its ratification by the Board each year. So that is a process that we envision. Good examples are the water main project, for instance, and wastewater projects, things of that nature, but our, our major expenditures on public buildings and facilities and equipment, are those significant or are they not? It is some, it's not something we have to deliberate about, or go to a third-party entity to determine whether, in the view, for instance, of the planning board, is something significant or not significant. It adds an entire additional step It adds an entire additional step, which I'm not, I don't see value added in that.
So can you explain, is this requiring a report to go to planning, is that what this is saying?
Not to planning, but just that the consideration of consistency with the two plans is documented in some way. And significance would be determined by the person that that is, by the town manager. He would decide whether something is significant.
Yeah, I don't know, that is.
I thought it was said earlier the Planning Board was going to make that determination.
No, the Planning Board has no role in this.
But what would be?
What if one disagrees with the determination of the town manager?
Well, what happens if someone disagrees with the cost of a proposal?
Well, then they'll, then they'll claim the town manager is violating the Charter.
Why?
Because I deem something not a significant public improvement that a third party deems is.
Are you violating the Town Charter if somebody disagrees with the cost?
Well, no, I guess, so Charlie, I think what we're saying is if the trigger for something to happen is this word significant, kind of goes back to what we talked about with the other one. If we don't have a definition of what significant is, and we just leave it up to either a board or an individual, I mean, the Charter should be something where it can be, I mean, I hate to use the word enforcement, but where people can be held to account. And I think when we use a word like significant, we don't say what that means, you know, I think that that's where some of the concern is coming in.
Defining it in the Charter wasn't necessary. The person with the authority to undertake the action would define it.
That leads them up to being criticized by someone who defines it differently.
But that's true of everything.
Not when it's requiring them to do something, a report on some things they'd have to.
Then remove significant, and the person with authority can decide.
But I guess then what's the point of the Charter? I mean, to me, the idea is that the Charter sets the requirements, you know, with varying levels of specificity, but sets the requirements for the way that our government is run. And so if things are sort of all left up to a board, I'm not sure why we put something in if it's, you know, generally sort of rights or responsibilities are, rights and responsibilities not dependent upon sort of the objective standpoint of an individual, I guess that's, so.
Well, I just, the purpose here.
You just have to, you just have to use the microphone.
I was just going to say, the purpose is to have some documentation that consideration was given to these two plans. Right now, there's no indication that they are considered. I respect that they are routinely and informally, but there's no, but there's no, there's no documentation to make that a more routine and reliable part of the process.
I would like to comment that this and the earlier issue around which we got hung up on significance are a major kind of concern or theme of our look at the Charter, which is that we work hard to create plans, and then sometimes we don't pay enough attention to them. So the issue to acknowledge that they're there and document that they've been looked at and have boards speak to each other about them, perhaps we haven't struck the right language. But the goal here is that if you have the LCP and you have the strategic plan, then in fact, the financial issues should relate to that. And when we first talked about this, I think the town manager was saying to us, my goodness, so much of what we do is routine, and it shouldn't be forced into this matrix. And so we said, okay, we don't, we don't mean the routine annual things, we mean the significant things. So in fact, we kind of put the word significant in there in part to say, there are major things, major capital undertakings in the plan, and they're important, and you deliberate about them, and we just would like to know that someone has checked off the box, that they've looked to double-check to make sure. So how we get that done is, I think, confusing people. But I think the theme for this Charter Review Committee, one of the themes was, we want to do everything we can to enhance people looking across, out of silos and across boundaries at these plans.
So I guess maybe one suggestion, I mean, I think that it's, you know, clear that that's sort of the sentiment, and I think that, again, this board encourages that, and I think, you know, that's what we've been trying to do. So I don't know if there's another mechanism, I guess I see both of, I don't want to go back to the other one because we've already voted, but something like this, it either has, it either, it can be very hollow. I guess I don't see the checking of the box or the, you know, I think if the goal is to substantively sort of create more communication, I'd rather see something that's more concrete, that we can say this really moves the dial towards us communicating. And I don't know what, you know, what that necessarily looks like, but I do think that, you know, again, the process of creating the capital improvement plan, I guess, if people don't feel it's appropriate or in line with the LCP, we're going to know that when everything comes forward to Town Meeting to vote on it. Or when it comes before the Board, the Board knows what our strategic plan is, the Board is aware of the LCP. So I guess I'm, you know, I feel like some of it is in search of a, of somewhat of a problem that doesn't exist, or the problem is something different than what this addresses. So Dogan and Sue.
I think it just, this is like a guarantee that we're not going to build a sewer treatment plant on a beach. Is that the idea of capital planning, want or I?
It could be, but there are other things in the comprehensive plan, in your plan, that may be inconsistent with a given capital project, and should be looked, it should be evaluated more. In other words, when we first looked at the Charter, we noted that there are three planning documents that are emphasized, the Long Range Plan, the comprehensively, the Master Plan, and the Capital Plan. And it gives prominence to those. It says nothing about alignment of those plans, which we try to do with the meetings that you have to get more alignment. And it says nothing about adherence to any of the plans. And there's no bylaw that the plans have to be followed. Now, it would seem reasonable that there would be some mechanism, not a rigid one, but some mechanism that these are formally considered in decision-making. And perhaps these haven't done that, but we still, I think, need to move in that direction, clearly aligning the plans and having mechanisms to make sure that they're considered in decision-making. For example, when we talked about one, I looked at the last version of the strategic plan, and the introduction, not to be critical, but your introduction says, "We hope that town agencies will give consideration and consider what we're doing." Wait a minute. I think it should have more effect than that you hope that town agencies may consider this.
We don't have authority, I mean, not to, we don't have, we can't demand, we can't, we can't, you know, we, our scope is somewhat limited.
A small mechanism to begin to do that, at least that they have to document that they have considered it. And that's sort of the purpose of that article.
I think this is a tremendously valuable discussion, but the reason I don't think we should move the article is because it again gets into operations. So I think there are, you know, good discussions, and I think certainly Board of Selectmen can, you know, request that the town manager align these things, and that's, you know, that may be what comes out of this and provide more information. But I don't think the Charter should get quite so deep into operational considerations.
Sam?
I want to say that, I mean, the Finance Committee goes over all these things before Town Meeting, and then Town Meeting goes over them, the Selectmen look and review all of these things. I think that's where this process comes.
No Long Range Plan, any care, or look at the Comprehensive Plan?
Well, I disagree with you.
Okay.
I think they basically raised the question about the priority of these various expenditures. And in the process, we're asking ourselves, is it going to further the goals of the town? And that's, you know.
But do they know what the goals of the town are? We all assume we do. I look at this stuff, and I couldn't tell you what's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan without actually looking at it and saying, yeah, this is, this isn't.
But I guess, so if I can just, to that, I think the same for the LCP and the strategic plan. I mean, so much work goes in, particularly the LCP was many year, you know, it was done over many years, and we update our strategic plan. But to me, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that this, a lot of work goes into it, and you hope that these plans, you know, generally a plan drives policy. But I think policy has to be nimble and responsive, and policy has to be able to adapt with, you know, whether it's changes in sort of our fiscal health, like what happened in, you know, oh-eight and oh-nine, if it's issues with, you know, really rapidly changing issues with climate change or coastal resiliency. So when I think of, when we create our strategic plan, I don't think of it so much as sort of dogma that has to be followed. You know, I hope it's sort of something that's percolating, it's in our minds or as we're developing policy. But to me, I'd rather see there be something that says committees, departments, town managers will be aware of and take into consideration strategic plan, capital plan, long-term, local comprehensive plan, something that sort of is more broad-based. And then in practice, we provide maybe LCP and strategic and a capital to the committees that it's really relevant for, and ask them to do that education for their committees. So that, you know, if we're really worried that people don't know these things to kind of have in the back of their head as we look at decisions, then the goal to me is not to make Julian check a box because frankly, he can just check any box or fill out any form, and that doesn't mean he's done it. And I'm sure Julian knows what the LCP is. If we're talking about everybody kind of having a broader education or understanding, I think that's very valuable, then I think we can attack it in a different way.
I was going to say, I think the language is just too concise and too detailed. Why can't it just say that in preparing the five-year plan, the town manager will consider the local comprehensive plan and how it applies to these capital plans? Something simple like that, that's not so restrictive.
I would much rather have that be our job to tell him to do that than have the Charter. I'm very happy to tell him that, saying, and actually already assuming he does look at how any of these things fit into local comprehensive plan and Long Range Plan. But I think that's our job to instruct our employee to do that, not the Charter.
And when we do his performance review, you know, that becomes, you know, those objectives that he has to pick up for the next year, right?
I can see that the value in having it in the Charter, to give a little more direction to pay attention to it, but not so specifically, the specific language.
Well, what if we had a place where we highlighted just those three plans that Charlie says are noted in the Charter, and that we, where, you know, sort of, if you're speaking in a, I can't think of the word, but you know, your aspirational manner, that, you know, that committees, departments, town, et cetera, shall, boards shall, you know, be aware of and shall consider, dah 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 dah. I mean, something that raises that profile and gets to this issue of, you know, really understanding it without going into day-to-day operations.
I would suggest that, we can't grapple with that wording here. This may be an area, although I'm a person on the committee who said, we better be done by December or you're going to find a new chairman. But I, it may be an area where we can work together to craft some language that would go to next November's Town Meeting around this issue and do it in the next three or four months so I can be done.
Done by December. And I think, you know, along with that other issue that we didn't pass, so that, which is all part of this conversation. So I think Selectman Jones has an article, excuse me, a motion to, hold it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I think that's helpful to flesh that all out. Which, what are we?
Article forty-seven, I move to come to new Article thirty-four.
Okay, all those, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Forty-eight, forty-nine together, right?
I'm going to add Articles forty-eight and forty-nine to the, as thirty-five and thirty-six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Once we held.
Held, like, we can go back to them.
It's saying maybe we're going to defer them.
CPC. Yeah, it's not you guys, no, CPC. That's right. Alright, so we held to, not meaning held, just meaning held for tonight, twenty-eight, okay? Which are the dates, are people okay, since we've narrowed things down a bit, how do people feel about?
I still think, I mean, I think it's, if we're going to defer any, I think it's okay to have a group of four finally defer as opposed to just one. That's the only way we defer.
I think they're deferring the two that Dr. Clark talked about as ones that we are going to defer and come back.
And come back to, okay.
I don't mind deferring Article twenty-eight also.
Okay, vote on that. Yep, motion, and Sam, I think, seconded by saying I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Deferring it to a later date, okay. We also had, let's see, tw, yeah, the old Article thirty-three, which is again, one of those housekeeping cleanups. Do people feel like we can bunch this together with twenty-eight, the old twenty-eight?
Next Town, you mean for next November?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's a defer.
A defer to another, so the ballot, we're just, now we're just talking about things we approve of but are trying to narrow the numbers. Okay, and then the only other one, I think, was thirty-five because that was the town moderator issue, another cleanup. Do people feel the same about that? Right, thirty-five was one that we didn't.
I move that we were defer Article thirty-five as it was presented to us.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we, are we sure about that?
Yes, well, they're pretty sure.
Yes, correct.
One like the other that we would look at in terms of.
Correct.
Building collaboration and approaching it from that direction.
That's a question on Article thirty-six and forty-six, that do we want to, can we tentatively defer? I mean, those are ones that I think with different language, I might be able to support. With the language they are right now, I would not support now or next November.
Frank, if we defer them, they can come back with new language and we vote on it again. If we don't support it, can they still, can the Charter still, if the Charter's not dissolved, Charter Review Committee, they can still bring us a different article, correct?
Well, they work for you, so.
So really, it doesn't matter.
They work for you, so they probably take your clue from you. But of course, you know, the Charter can be amended by petition from citizens, so it's never over.
Don't tell Dr. Clark that, he wants it to be over with George Judy or any of these other folks. I, just for consistency's sake, if we are going to defer thirty-six and, we'd have to revote thirty-six, but if we, do people feel comfortable, yes, deferring them so that they, the Charter Review Committee can take a look at them and try to present to something different, or do? So we just leave that as it is and they can come stand? So the vote will stand and we'll take a look at forty-six?
I need to ask you, I guess, or work with Peter, but when you, when you use the term defer, it means you approved of the language, but you're not going to take it, at this meeting, you're going to suggest it comes a year, a year from now.
Unless we voted against it.
You, there were three that I have you voting against.
Yes, I believe so.
I have them as the old thirty-six, the old thirty-eight, and the old forty-six.
Right.
Is that right? And the fact that you voted them down means you don't like the language, and it won't come to this meeting, but you're open to the idea, I heard, of looking at a different approach to building that collaboration between the plans.
Correct.
So that we could take it as a message from you that if we wanted to take on that challenge as part of our work, you're giving it to us, and we would come back and talk to you, and that's again, for another year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We wouldn't wait another year to get it done.
No, 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 but it wouldn't, it wouldn't come to Town Meeting if it was going to. to until November.
That's right.
And then the other, the other ones, we're just deferring for the sake of the logistics of, we approved them, we're deferring them in terms of time.
Right.
And I'm sure Peter can give you a clean list.
Two more, Articles forty-one, Article, the old Article forty-one, forty-two, we're moving that we defer till November two thousand twenty.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's right, I had those deferred, thank you.
Great, thank you. I just want to say thank you again to the Charter Review Committee. You guys took on just an enormous, you know, just to have everyone who comes with such a passion and opinion, a perspective, and to come to consensus on that many, you know, recommendations and the detail and the thought that went into them, it's, we really appreciate it. And it gives us a lot to, I think, even the things that we don't, we didn't vote on to approve tonight, I think it really shed some light on places where we can make improvements. So a huge thanks, it's a, you know, I don't even want to know how many times you guys met, but I know it's a lot. And so I understand the goal to try and wrap it up in the coming months, and we really appreciate it. So thank you. Okay, so we need to execute the warrant, right? Do I have the, I do. Okay.
Will we execute the warrant?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what else? Do we have any other business for tonight?
Only if you want any reports. Not necessary.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
I clarified it.
Yeah. Pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you, animals.
Okay.